Good evening, everyone, and thank you for coming to our Neighborhood Board thirteen downtown Chinatown meeting. My name is Ernest Carvalho. I am Chair of Neighborhood Board thirteen. Once again, welcome. I would like to introduce our staff to introduce themselves, starting from my immediate left coming up this way.
Good evening. My name is Lori McCarny. Thank you very much for coming tonight.
Thank you, everyone, for joining tonight in the last meeting of this term. My name is Kevin Lai.
Hello, everyone. My name is Ross Isokane. Happy to be back in this warm and lovely cafeteria.
Hello, this is Sean. Thank you guys for coming.
Aloha. This is Shulon Shuberquak. Welcome to our meeting.
All right, once again, meeting started at six o'clock on the dot. I would actually like to introduce, we have two new members, actually technically, that will be coming on next month. There are Ross Isukane, who just came on last month, was voted on, and then we have sitting in the audience, Mr. Travis, oh, Dr. Travis Thompson here. Travis, want to say something real quick?
I think most people here know me, but Travis Thompson, glad to be taking part, coming up here. Thank you.
Glad to see you. Thank you very much. So we'll get this meeting started. We'll start with our... Go ahead, Mr. Lai. Board member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move to amend the agenda to reflect the items that were deferred from the adopted May twenty twenty-three meeting agenda to now include plans to amend things already adopted, namely approving the many minutes from December twenty twenty-one through March twenty twenty-three as distributed and posted on the public-facing Neighborhood Board thirteen Google Drive for May twenty twenty-three and for June twenty twenty-three. These items have been cited as agenda items five C one for April twenty twenty-three, five C two for May twenty twenty-three, and five C three through five three, five C sixteen for the parcel of months from December twenty-two through March twenty twenty-three. Thank you.
You're making the motion, correct?
To clarify, I just want to amend the agenda to include the things that we skipped last month as far as the meeting minutes we were going to consider, but for which we ran out of time.
Is there a second on this?
I second it.
Any, um, go ahead and follow up with discussions on this? Any discussions for this? So, um, from what I'm getting from the OIP, we can go ahead and add to this agenda, yes, but to do that, we're going to need two thirds of the vote. But, but here's the thing. The question is, should we move forward with this or should we wait and get this put on agenda correctly next month? And the reason I say this, because even though we can go ahead and add it to the agenda, OIP says we cannot vote on it. This is coming strictly down from OIP, which was sent a mass letter to all chairs, just about a week ago. Yeah, Chair.
If I may.
One, just one clarification. Uh, yeah, so it is, should we or should we not? The best practice is don't add to the agenda without public notice. And if you do, you should not vote. The NCO's advice is don't add things to the agenda and then vote on them at that same meeting because the public didn't have ample time. Um, I understand in this case it's about minutes. Um, the fine print is that you should not be taking action on things that you added to the agenda if you believe it affects a significant amount of people. And that's just one of the clauses. So it's up to the board, but the NCO's advice is, uh, do not vote on something that's added to the agenda.
But that is also OIP's stance on this, yeah?
Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Again, for the board, these are items that were on our agenda for last month. They were duly noticed. This was something that is clearly explicitly described as being deferred till this meeting within the public-facing draft meeting minutes for this month. Uh, the public has had plenty of time to impact these minutes. And again, is the, the board must decide if what we are acting on will impact a large number or to a significant degree, our constituents. Those are all very soft terms if we feel that it is something that, uh, you know, reflecting an adoption of the format of our minutes for content that's already been adopted by this body in the past. If we think it's going to make a difference, fine, happy to defer. But again, I think we need to realize that the laxity here, I hate to say it, Mr. Chair, falls on you perhaps for not following what we had agreed to defer to for last month. And so I just want to make sure we can get this done as soon as possible. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Board members, Shulon Shuberquak?
Chair, I think we're wasting time because it has already been approved and archived, and there were no significant errors in any of the content of the minutes that were approved both by the Chair and the Secretary of the NCO and Dylan, I mean, also Deputy Director Whitso. So unless there's significant errors, then we should really look at it. But there are no significant errors other than the personal, uh, opinion of somebody, so I don't think so. Sorry.
Go ahead, board member Lori.
Um, so what I would move is that we do add these to the agenda as a group, and then we vote to approve all of them as a group so that we can start our new year without them following us along.
All right, anyone else has anything else to say? Go ahead, board member Lai.
Thank you, Chair, third-time speaker. Um, just to clarify, these are amendments to the minutes that have already been approved by the board. This is simply to change the format of such so that NCO can then publish them to the NCO, har- harvested, rather, NB thirteen sub-site, just to clarify.
Okay, so you're clarifying that we've already done this, but all you are trying to do is change the way it's done so that NCO can properly put it in correctly. Is that what?
That's what it boils down to.
Do we have any, do we have any more discussions on this? Here and now, um, do we have any objections?
Chair, it's not an objection thing because the discussion is, do we want to add it on the agenda today? Two thirds needed to amend it to listen to all of this, but I'd like to ask Dylan, our NCO assistant, would there, would not the minutes properly, um, reviewed and then archived for the number of days, within thirty days, so it wasn't improperly done, right?
Uh, yes, in terms of producing the minutes, uh, the NCO currently produces the draft, um, but ultimately it's up to the board to approve any version they want. And then when they do that, they submit it to our office in the correct format, and then we publish it on our website as a separate item called Board Approved Minutes that'll be different from the draft minutes that we currently produce. Um, yeah, I would recommend that we do a roll call.
Yes, um, okay, so, um, any more discussions? Go ahead, board member Lai.
Last thing, Chair, you need to, I hope the board can recall that in October of twenty twenty-two, re-approved a motion for the Chair to place these minutes in public view by fifteen November twenty twenty-two. That did not happen, and so I've been trying hard since then to make it happen. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion? All right, you do a roll call, please.
All right, uh, just to be clear, the motion on the table is to amend the agenda, to add in, uh, the approval, the amendment and approval of past minutes that have already been adopted. Fitzsimmons.
Aye.
Isokane.
Aye.
Moore, Lai.
Aye.
McDonald, McCarny.
Aye.
Shuberquak. And Sturgis Carvalho.
Aye.
All right, one, two, three. All right, so yeah, we have five, which would normally pass, but this is a motion to amend the agenda, which requires six. Uh, motion does not pass.
All right, moving forward, we're going to go ahead and go to public safety report. We start off with the Honolulu Fire Department. All right, so they're not here. So we're going to go with the Honolulu Police Department, Lieutenant Segusio.
Good evening, Chair Carvalho, board members, and everyone in attendance. Lieutenant Arnold Segusio, representing the Honolulu Police Department, District One, Community Area of Responsibility. Thank you for your time and patience. Uh, tonight we got the statistical information for you. And if you want more information, you can go to the HPD public website at www.honolulupd.org. So the statistical information for the past month of May is as follows. So motor vehicle thefts is sixteen, when the previous month was ten. Burglaries is seven, when the previous month was eight. Thefts is fifty-five, previous was forty-eight. U M Vs or car break-ins was forty, uh, previous was nineteen. Assaults were sixteen, previous month was fifteen. Sex assaults were five, previous six. Uh, graffiti cases was one, previous month was two. Drug offenses were three, from the previous month it was eleven. So total calls for service, uh, for the month of May was three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight, compared to the previous month, two thousand one hundred and twenty-eight. Uh, so for the month of May, there was a one thousand eight hundred and forty more calls for service. Uh, there is a U M V spike for the area, but, uh, there were several arrests that resulted from some of these cases, so we should be, uh, seeing a dip in these offenses for the next month's statistics. I checked in the robbery offenses and located for, for the area. Commonalities of the offense were that cell phones, AirPods, and cameras were taken. Uh, I checked also for catalytic converter thefts, and there was none for the month of May. Uh, board member Lai, I did, um, pass on that information for, to first watch in regards to the area of Bethel and South Pawai Street. Uh, they've been making periodic checks. There has been no, um, issuances of citations or any violations observed at that time. Uh, it's graduation season once again, everyone. Uh, with the class of twenty twenty-three finishing, we are expecting some celebrations, uh, to include alcohol. Please advise our teens and young adults to refrain from consuming alcohol and driving during this time. We at HPD, the Traffic Division, will be conducting weekly roadblocks up and until Labor Day that happens on September fourth. Labor Day weekend happens to be the deadliest, uh, weekend, uh, to be on the road, uh, just for that reason. More drunken driving collisions and resulting in serious injuries and fatalities happens on this particular weekend more than the others. A safety tip of the month, well, will be firearm safekeeping. Uh, it is all our responsible firearm owners to secure all firearms to prevent theft, misuse, and accidental discharge. With the report, reported cases being investigated of an elementary school student coming to school with a firearm, we're asking our community members to secure all firearms responsibly. Speak with our children to prevent over curiosity and turning, you know, from turning into a tragedy. Firearms thefts are also becoming more and more prevalent, uh, with some home residents being burglarized. Firearms are the main things being sought for in these homes. Law enforcement understands that nothing is foolproof, and even safes can be pried or even broken into. However, some of the reports of these firearm thefts, these firearms were easily located within the bedroom or closet. To prevent accidental discharge, our community members should be utilizing trigger locks and keep ammunition locked up in a different location. Lastly, storage of a firearm in a lockbox within a vehicle is ill-advised due to possible theft from, uh, car thefts and break-ins, as well as being a criminal offense in regards to our place-to-keep laws. The offense can be, uh, for place-to-keep is a C felony and can be punishable up to five years, uh, if convicted, yeah. At this time, I can, uh, I'm going to yield back the rest of my time and take any questions from the board, then the public attendees.
All right, thank you very much. So do we have any questions from those in attendance here? All right, go ahead, ma'am, come up and please state your name.
Uh, my name is Lynn Pye, P Y L E. Uh, my question was, I heard in the police report that we had, uh, was it three thousand? Three thousand nine hundred and sixty-eight service calls, and of those calls, we resulted in three drug offenses. Nothing listed for prostitution. I live at the corner of Kukui Street and, uh, Fort Street, right across from Sea Dido Society and the Long's Parking Lot. I can tell you, I'm not a police officer, but I can bust a lot more than three. Um, and so I'm wondering why there aren't any, uh, arrests at all for prostitution. I'm wondering if there's a loitering law to prevent people from hanging out outside Sea Dido Society and the Long's Parking Lot. Uh, and those are my, my issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you for that question. So in regards to that, I'll be forwarding this information to the Narco Vice, uh, Morals Detail in regards to that location. However, it's very difficult for us to get any prostitution offenses because obviously no one's going to walk up to a uniformed officer and provide us, uh, money for sex, yeah. So, um, we'll, we'll be forwarding that to the, uh, Morals Division of Narco Vice, and then we probably could utilize, um, some undercovers at that location. Now, in regards to the, the, the total number of calls, uh, some, some of them occur at night in regards to them loitering in that location, but it's a public street. Um, if they're standing on the public street, we, we can ask them to move along, but we, we don't have the right to, um, tell them where to be, yeah.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, sir. Please come up to the mic, please. State your name, please.
Hi, I'm Dr. Pye, um, also a resident of, uh, Kukui Plaza. Um, I chair, uh, the Human Concerns Commission of the Interfaith Alliance Hawaii. Uh, we've been having, uh, brainstorming, uh, problem-solving discussions the last several months with anyone who's interested in discussing, uh, the issues that include street crime, but also responding compassionately to the mental, mental health and homelessness issues and the safety concerns of residents. I think, uh, there's a lot that the group has brainstormed. Um, I hear frequently, because I'm one of those who are a trickle in the, in the many, many calls to nine-one-one, and I've heard, uh, the same kind of responses you just gave, which I appreciate you stating, um, except that, uh, it, we, we're, I remember not that long ago, um, and maybe some of you remember the news story of stranger danger incident for a fourteen-year-old over in Kahala area around a school. Um, the, uh, the vice principal here at the school where we're meeting had a conversation with me, um, representing that group, and he pointed out that the walk that the students have to take through all of those problems, including the crime and the indecent exposure that I, that I documented, um, is traumatizing. That's his word, traumatizing to the students. And we're talking about people who are twelve years old, thirteen years old, fourteen years old, middle school, intermediate school age folks, our children. There's, there's, I, I have a great deal of concern for the stranger danger, uh, incident over in Kahala, which got a lot of press and police response. We have daily stranger danger for our kids here, and I don't think the police and the community is fully responding with the same kind of concern for the kids of our school, of this school where we are meeting. Right now, you can look across the street and, and you can see some of the traumatizing behavior and circumstances. Some of it, you know, homeless, mentally ill, who needs some help. Some of it probably criminal, and we need more resources. A week, a couple weekends ago, my wife and I took a drive around the island. One of the other responses I've heard for difficulty in enforcement is short staffing. And of course, that is a concern. Um, but we noticed the priorities of staffing seem to be to leave a police officer on duty uh, in the parking lots to protect the cars at beaches for hours upon hours, but not to provide the same kind of presence for the kids who have to cross that very busy street. The street itself, the traffic, calls for some assistance. On top of that, we have prostitution, we have drug sales. I have saw and reported, um, just recently and have photos of the bag of meth that was dropped by someone on our property right next to where three of the, uh, folks who are often seen on the street, um, were interacting with about eight or ten of the intermediate school kids after school. And I don't know that they were giving drugs to the kids, but what kind of stranger danger is that? So we need to take this a lot more seriously, and some of the brainstorming that my group has been doing has been to recognize how serious the impact is on our community and how lack of, how we need to be more serious in our response and commitment to solutions. Part of the, part of that is going to be policing. There is also going to be services and other, other things that we need for the inter, interconnecting problems that we have. Thank you.
Mr. Pye.
Yes.
Well, give me a call. I'll help you guys on that. I have to do my stuff, sir. Go ahead, Lieutenant.
Yeah, sorry, I apologize, Mr. Pye, but, um, what I'm going to do is I'm going to forward my email to, uh, Mr. Dylan Buck, and then maybe we could, um, you could email me some of that brainstorming ideas that you possibly have. I can possibly take that to my command and see if we can do it. But just realize this, right? We pay, um, HPD or the law enforcement, we play by a different rulebook, um, where we have to make sure that, you know, everyone's rights are, are being protected, even these, um, some questionable people, yeah. But yeah, please do forward that brainstorming, um, ideas. I would love to share that with my command. So I'm going to, um, email Dylan, uh, my email address so he can provide it to you.
Chair.
All right, thank you. One more. Go ahead.
Um, I know a lot of, um, young women are being trafficked, and, um, maybe some of these, uh, young ladies who are out there can be at least asked if they're okay. Um, that is a significant problem in our, in our community, and, and I don't, I don't know that that would be against the law, and it can be really helpful to some people who are in very bad situations.
All right, thank you very much. Okay, before we move to the board, is there any more, anyone else from our audience here at the school that would like to speak on this, uh, ask any questions? All right, here and now, is there anyone online? All right, I see no one online. We'll go ahead next to our Shulon Shuberquak, then followed by Sean Fitzsimmons.
Lieutenant? Lieutenant, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Shulon, thank you. Um, serious crime, uh, just happened two days ago in Chinatown where a woman was murdered, and then her body was carried to the Smith-Beritania Park. And then, um, detectives closed down Pawahi and part of Smith to do investigation. And then the cameras, they were asking from private businesses to provide, and it's a pretty scary scene. So I wanted to know if there's any update or arrest made, uh, because the Chinatown is very jittery right now. So we're very concerned with, with this, and also there was an assault on a elderly woman recently as well. So if you can help to provide some calmness, I really appreciate that.
Absolutely. Um, thank, thank you, board member, um, for bringing that up, yeah. It's pretty interesting that you did bring it up because it was by people on third watch that actually, um, got some pertinent information in regards to that one particular case about the one that one female being carried out. Um, I think we might want to check, though. I don't think she is passed at this point in time yet. She's still at Queens at this point in time, but we're taking it very seriously. Uh, my officers, under the leadership of Sergeant Hosaka, had, uh, located some leads, and we provided those leads to the Criminal Investigative Division. So we're actively working it right now with, um, some of the other, um, units, um, that we're having in, in Chinatown, yeah. I, I think that's like, uh, as far as I can go in regards to that, because it's still an ongoing investigation. But rest assured, we are working on it at this moment.
All right, thank you. Um, next, um, Vice Chair, Sean.
Hey, Lieutenant, how's it going? Um, a real quick question. You mentioned that the unauthorized entry into motor vehicle arrests, uh, more than doubled this past year, and you alluded to, um, an arrest of, uh, some people that you felt were, I guess, uh, I guess a car theft ring, for lack of a better, uh, description. Could you provide a little bit more information about, um, about that group? And why do you think, uh, that group targeted, uh, our community?
Uh, perfect question. Um, so in regards to the, um, motor vehicle break-ins or U M Vs, unauthorized entry to motor vehicles, it did spike up. It went up from forty. Uh, this passed me. From the previous month, it was nineteen. Uh, you might not believe this, but as, as the weather gets warm, uh, more of these property crimes start to become more prevalent. Uh, particular locations, uh, become more, um, looked at by these criminals, so we're allocating more, more, um, undercover units in the area uh, to try to deter some of these numbers. But then we did make several arrests. When we did allocate more officers into the area, there were several arrests for the same offense. So hopefully, on the next, uh, resulting statistics, we should see a drop. If there's not a drop, then, then obviously there's more players in the location. We're also seeing a spike in, uh, U M Vs or break-ins in the Kakaaka Alamoana area. So, but I mean, it's just real prevalent over there because of the large shopping malls and large, um, parking structures. And majority of our offenses in Chinatown are from parking structures, so it's a little bit difficult for officers to make our routine patrols because a lot of these parking, um, public parking areas are secured. You know, they have an arm. It's not, it's not really feasible, not really easy for officers to just drive through and, and, and look. But, uh, the extra surveillance cameras, uh, in the area would, would, would greatly help. So hopefully they can, um, I know that we're, we're, we're getting those things put in at the Chinatown sub right now. Uh, you guys probably know more about it.
Uh, real quick follow-up. Thank you, Lieutenant. Um, could you, are there any specific parking structures that you found that are being, uh, I guess disproportionately targeted? And if so, can you identify them?
You know, generally, the, the municipal parking, uh, places, like on Monarchia, um, there's also one by Smith-Beritania area. Um, it's usually those particular areas. And then at night, um, it's pretty much everywhere on the streets because it's, it's a little bit darker, uh, less people traveled, so it's easier for these, uh, suspects. So the one thing that we've been noticing too is that majority of these suspects are arriving and leaving on bicycles. So we've also initiated a bicycle enforcement, uh, for the Chinatown area. So we're going to be, um, kind of hitting, hitting on those illegal bikes and, uh, untaxed bike situations.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have board member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. Lieutenant, while I'm bringing up this shared screen, I just want to echo the comments by Mr. and Mrs. Pye earlier tonight. It's, um, that corner that they are describing is increasingly active and really demonstrates the changes that our neighborhood has sustained in the past couple of years. There was a period of time when things were actually relatively better. There were new lights, tree, uh, tree limbs were trimmed and visibility had increased. But now it just seems as if there is just constant circulating. And if you're able to stick around for our Citizen Patrol report, you'll see some images from that area. But for now, I just wanted to show you a few images that were otherwise collected. Uh, again, to bring to your attention the, uh, recurring, uh, trash bin still in front of the fire hydrant. I know we discussed this before, but is there any detail you can ask to just go by and check on that? You know, if it's there, there's people who are, you know, digging through it, uh, you know, quite often. Regarding the, uh, noise-making activities every Saturday night and Sunday night, early Sunday morning, early Saturday morning, uh, yeah, it, it's continuing and it hasn't changed. And again, if there'd be a way to have some blue light presence preemptively in the area, starting at around one thirty AM, I know you said that there's teams there that are probably trying to help out, but the impact is really nil. And these are noises that are tremendous, up for, you know, twenty, thirty stories up in the air, a block and a half away from the area. So certainly that we need some help. This also plays into the request we'll be making later on about where to strategically place some of the noise capturing cameras as our red light cameras, and we have some red sound cameras. This is one intersection you see on the right-hand panel that would be useful, as this is a place where people are just gunning their engines as they're leaving the clubs, turning off of Bethel onto Beritania. Fortunately, the image here is of the guy turning the correct way, as we discussed last week, because somebody went the opposite way. Uh, on a recent Friday evening, there was a sign that was placed smack in the middle of a crosswalk on Bethel at Chaplain Lane. Uh, what's going to get your opinion on this, if this is potentially legal? Or what would be the implication if a patrol officer had been walking around and actually seen this? What might we have expected? Um, and although the image in the middle panel here is a question of what do we do about defacement of federal properties such as, uh, a federal US mailbox, the principal question here from a constituent is, what happens if they come across a solar-powered, uh, meter that has nothing on the display? It's dead. There's no bag on top, and nothing indicates that it should not be working, but it clearly is not working. What are the obligations of a user who wants to make use of that particular parking spot on the street? Thank you.
Okay, so we'll start off with, um, I think it was that, the, the noise complaint in regards to that Pawahi and Bethel area. Oh, sorry, let's start back there with the, the trash can. So we had actually made contact with, uh, that, um, that company in order to get that trash bin removed from that location. So obviously, they're, they're, they're not, um, complying with that whole thing. Because I, I, if I'm not pretty, if I'm pretty sure, a truck has to back up and put it back into that building. There's a gate to, just to the left of that picture, but I think they're not doing it. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to make another phone call. I'm going to pull a, a Miss Pub Report number, and if they don't move it, then I'm going to issue a citation to the company. Um, the next thing, uh, was the noise in the area of Bethel and Pawahi. That, uh, we, we allow our office, well, we tell our officers on first watch to kind of monitor the location, but just realize that there's a lot of liquor establishments in, in that one particular area, especially that one where you saw the sign in, in the walkway. Uh, when they release at two o'clock in the morning, it's, it's, it's kind of almost difficult to tell these people to keep it down. I mean, they're I mean, they're leaving, they're leaving a liquor establishment. I mean, it's, it's even in Waikiki, it's, it's a difficult thing. And that's why they're, 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 they're sent out that, um, you know, those noise, um, me, metering, um, devices to that location. And including to, uh, from Anoa. So that one particular sign right there, that's in violation right there because that entire lane and that vehicle that's parked in there is in violation. Because that's actually a fire lane. So they could be cited and told for that, uh, violation. So I'll, I'll, I'll pass that information to first watch. Because it's always on the first watch, um, timeframe where they're in violation of, of these things, right? Cause obviously in that location, parking is of a premium. The municipal parkings and, uh, Mark's Garage, they generally close at twelve. So a lot of people get stuck in there. That's the kinds of calls that we get, um, when, you know, um, people park and then they can't get their cars out. So what they'll do is they'll park, you know, outside. And obviously there's, uh, parking is of a premium at that point in time. In regards to the graffiti to the federal, uh, that mailbox, I think that would have to be forwarded to the Postmaster General for repair. Uh, because we don't even have the right, uh, if I'm not mistaken, maybe we can ask Shulon. But in regards to paint overs on those, because we need to get permission, yeah, from the, um, Postmaster General to, to paint over these things. And I, they, they don't allow us to just paint over these things with any kind of color and stuff like that. Which also, you know, applies to like the graffiti in town too. We cannot just go and paint on people's wall to paint on graffiti. We have to get the permission because they have to approve the color, uh, they have to. So there's a lot of logistics that go on in regards to graffiti that's occurring in Chinatown. Now, in regards to the parking meter, parking meter not working. If it's not working at that point in time, then it's pretty much free parking. None of my offices, I don't think they were gonna be able to cite because there's, it's not gonna even indicate that it's, um, you know, delinquent in payment. Because if it's not working, it's just not working. And then, um, that you could just forward it to the, uh, the, um, traffic meter division. And then they can get it replaced and fixed, yeah.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else on the board with a first question? Just one question, not seeing any. We'll go to Shulon Shubert Quok for your last question.
Lieutenant, I really want to follow up, uh, update on the new, um, foot patrol for Chinatown. And secondly, the cameras that were promised, the emergency four cameras, when are they coming on? Because it's been about a month ago when it was promised. And also wanted to know, um, the 111 location of King. That there's a bunch of people loitering, drinking, uh, on Kikaliki Mall. So we wondered that, um, to get some attention from the police, whether it's they're cruising or patrolling. Because right now, we're not seeing any patrol or any, uh, police on unicycle or bicycle or anything. They were supposed to come on. So I just want to know, update on what kind of schedule you guys have. Thank you.
Okay, Ms., uh, Ms. Shulon Quok. Uh, the, in regards to the, uh, those temporary cameras, I think you would, you guys would have more information in regards to that. They don't, I don't have any information in regards to when those, uh, were implemented. I know that they did ask for them about a month ago, um, where they are at this point in time. I, I will have to gotta pretty much check with my command in regards to that. Um, in regards to the fourth watch or the foot patrols in the particular area, I think with all of the events that were occurring in May, I think they were, uh, reallocated to some of those events. And, and, um, we, we need to probably relook at that, yeah, when, when the foot patrols are coming out. But we still do have the Chinatown Task Force that's still occurring. And the projects, the district projects that are still occurring. So, uh, with Kikaliki being under construction at this point in time, um, there's some heavy equipment over there too, um, which we're kind of wondering if it's gonna be there, um, more so than not. Because it kind of, uh, hinders us from making inspections of that location easily by just driving by. So we're just kind of wondering, um, how we're gonna do that. But I'll, I'll bring that, the, the camera, right, the emergency cameras that, uh, to my command. Uh, also, uh, relate the, uh, triple one North King, uh, to third watch and first watch for review.
Lieutenant, there's room on the other side of the mall. Because the barricade right now is to allow the concrete and also to cover all the big holes that they dug. So it's gonna be several months. And so as soon as 555 barricade is a little bit removed and that area dries up, uh, there's no room for a car to go through like a patrol car. Even we have garbage pickup difficulty right now. But, um, on the other side, there is insufficient lane for bicycle or foot patrol to go through. Because people still need to transfer to cross from, uh, King to Hotel. And particularly noted also is that North Hotel, there are a lot of private cars using it. So we know that even the police officer from our Chinatown substation comes out and tell them not to do that. But I think an easy solution would be to have police recommend DTS to, to paint on, on Hotel Street. On that, no cars, no private cars, no cars. It would help because they're too, too dangerous. Cause they're coming around very fast on River Street, swing into Hotel. And then they're either going to Nu'anu or they're going down Smith. So dangerous, I see more and more private cars.
That is correct. So, um, if we could, maybe we could put more, uh, a bigger sign, like right at the beginning of Hotel Street and at the end of Hotel Street near Alakia or Bishop Street, saying that it's only a bus transit lane and it's only supposed to be used by city vehicles, yeah? That'll be fantastic, that's a fantastic idea. Even painting the, painting the road would be a great idea also.
All right, all right, thank you, Lieutenant Segusio. I'm gonna, um, ask persons, I do not need answers for it now, just email me the answers so I can respond to it. So basically I'm getting a lot of complaints, uh, on Merchant Street between Bethel and Bishop. The street is packed with cars with people inside doing unsavory things and nothing is happening. The people especially from Harbor Court would like answers to this. Is why is this still allowed to go out? And why people are allowed to sit in the cars and take up spaces instead of allowing other cars to be able to go through? The next one I have is, um, they want to address the problem with the central, um, post office here. Um, why is the post office allowed to have their vans, their, um, post office, um, trucks out there taking, um, two to three lanes? And causing problems with people not being able to flow through? And also making it difficult for cars to make that, um, left-hand turn? Yep, they're, they're having problems with this, they want to know why we're still allowing that, yeah? If you can just answer me that in an email, I would appreciate it. There is no more further questions for you at this time. I do appreciate it. That was it. I do appreciate it. That was, that was it, we're done. Um, thank you for your time, we do appreciate it, all right? Thank you. Next, we're gonna go ahead, um, we're gonna move on to new business, introduction to the community. New owners, uh, Sue and Bob's Circle. Changed their name to Beach House Bear Company. Ariel, are you there? Hello, Ariel?
Excuse me, while, while we're waiting for, for the next, uh, person, uh, my name is Deborah Bremen. I'm on my phone and I have a question, if I may ask, please.
And the question is to whom at this time?
Uh, to the police, sure.
Okay, I'm gonna allow this, I'm gonna allow this one time. So when I go through the list and I do apologize, we go through the list, I go through those in attendance here, those online. And I look for it, if there's nothing, then I move to the board. And I, I end up doing it last, yeah? Because this way we keep everything in time order so we can get through the meetings without delay. And so I'll go ahead and allow you to go ahead and speak this one, go ahead.
Thank you, I have two quick questions. So number one, um, my friend was driving in front of Queens by the parking garage. And there was a naked man laying on the sidewalk in front of the parking garage. And knowing to do anything about that, which I think is not really good, uh, for the public to see. And second question really quick is, uh, I have a home health aide who works long hours. She came home, uh, many times to find people parked in her driveway. And she has no trespassing signs and she has, you know, do not park here signs and they park there anyway. And she's called the police and they told her that they can't do anything because they don't even know who the person is. And I'd just like to know if you could tell me what I can tell her to do? Thank you.
Okay, the first question was the, um, person in front of the parking structure at Queens. Uh, normally, um, sad to say, some of these people are, you know, taken to Queens and then often discharged from that location. And once they're discharged, where they go is pretty much, um, out of our control in that case. Um, now if someone calls and we go there and then we, we, we see that they're in medical need, we will, we, we call 911 and we call for an ambulance. Uh, and often, that usually happens. But just realize, once they get service and they're discharged from Queens, we often get called because people don't want to leave Queens. And then we often have to make trespass cases for, um, particular people not wanting to leave the hospital. Uh, however, it's, you know, it's a hospital, right? So if they're in medical need, they have to be saw, seen by medical staff. Now, in regards to the blocking driveway, uh, I'm not calling your friend that she might not understand what the officer told her. But if someone's blocking your driveway, that is a violation and it's a total offense, right? We can, we can cite for blocking driveway, there's an actual offense for that. And then we can actually tow. So I don't know what the officer told your friend, but, um, it's, it's a total offense, we can do it.
So the police can have the car towed?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
If it's on, if it's on the street, not on a, not on a private.
No, it's on her, in her private driveway.
Oh, no, then that, then there, there were correct in that regard then. So the, the person that owns that driveway would have to call for a tow truck to get that vehicle removed. If it's blocking the driveway and it's on the street, then we can tow it for that.
No, they park in her driveway, oh, okay. So she would have to pay to have it towed?
Correct. Cause it's some private property.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, um, thank you very much, I do appreciate it. Um, just to be fair, and I said that I would always be fair. So since I allowed that, Lieutenant Segusio, I'm gonna allow one more question from Board Member McDonald. Board Member McDonald, please ask a question.
Thank you Chair, and thank you Lieutenant for being here. Um, I had a quick question, uh, you mentioned earlier, and I think this is great, you had 3,000 arrests, uh, which I think is a good number, I think it's a good start anyway. Uh, but I'm wondering if there are statistics here about how many of the arrests were, uh, recidive, um, offenders, repeat offenders? How many of them, how many of the arrests were repeat offenders? And, and what can be done to keep these people from off of the streets and able to repeat offend? And then, uh, I wanted to follow up on the, the last lady's question too. Is that right, that if a car is parked on your private property, you have to pay to get it towed? Okay, so those are my questions. Uh, and if you don't know the numbers of, uh, repeat offenders for the arrests, maybe you can come back with that next month.
So the first question in regards to recidivism, uh, so it's a real huge thing, right? But I think it's not for public record. I don't think we can provide that information without, um, some constitutionality violation in regards to that information. Now, if the prosecutors would provide that information, I'm not sure if we, but I don't, I'm pretty sure that law enforcement can provide that information to the general public. Um, that's why we, um, you know, we keep that type of information kind of, uh, coded in a sense when we run people's names and stuff like that. So that the general public, when they hear it, they don't know exactly what it, it, it kind of stands for. Um, in regards to the driveway violation, yes. So I'll give you a perfect example. So someone parks illegally at Alamoana Shopping Center and takes up four stalls. Um, they may call us, but we cannot, w- we're not the authorities in regards to, um, towing that vehicle or, or removing it from property. Uh, so they would have to actually call and, 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 and get that vehicle removed on their own.
All right, thank you very much, I do appreciate it. Thank you Lieutenant Segusio. We'll see you next month on the 6th of July. All right, thank you.
Have a great night.
You too. So next, we'll move on to new business. Is Ariel here? Yeah, okay, so not seeing Ariel. We'll go down next to introduction to the community. Uh, Drip Studio Coffee Shop on Fourth Street, is Kelsey Urhara here? All right, and so I did send a, um, agenda to all of them, yeah? So they should have known this. So we'll go ahead and we'll move on. So we'll start to the post-event report from Family Promise, Kiki Community Fair with Ryan Catalani, please.
Hello Chair, members of the neighborhood board, thanks for having me today. Uh, my name is Ryan Catalani, I'm the executive director, uh, at a nonprofit called Family Promise of Hawaii. I don't know that anyone from my organization has been to this neighborhood board before. So I wanted to start off with just an introduction about what we do, which is trying to address family homelessness. So, um, we have a, a, a brief video, just sort of giving an explanation and then I'll, uh, dive into more details after that. We'll watch it with subtitles, I'll narrate it. Do you want to restart it Dylan? Okay, so this is, uh, Funin Fritz. She says she has seven kids, a big family. And, uh, due to Hawaii's high cost of living, Funin's family lost their housing. They bounced between the homes of their family and friends, lived in their car, and ultimately had to split up their family to find temporary places to stay. Family Promise of Hawaii helped Funin's family transition from homelessness to permanent housing. She says, "I'm happy to say with their help, my family is together and we're doing very well right now." Sounds better in her voice. Uh, she said, "It's really emotional because I never get to tell them this, but this means a lot, what they've done. I think Family Promise is not just a program, it's a God-sent blessing to families like mine. They didn't, they did not just help me, but they pushed me through all the way since day one. Thank you so much, Family Promise. Uh, Family Promise of Hawaii serves families with children experiencing homelessness. We provide holistic compassionate services to help families get back on their feet, including emergency shelter, rental assistance, and case management. Each year, we help hundreds of families like Funin's return to permanent housing and achieve sustainable independence. And that's me, so this is my voice. We believe at Family Promise that, uh, family homelessness is one of the most urgent social challenges in the state. According to the latest federal data, an estimated 1 in 30 young children in Hawaii experience homelessness every year. Uh, we're helping to ensure that no kids in our community are houseless and making sure that we can continue to help families find permanent housing. I like to say that Family Promise is a small but mighty organization. They do great things in the community and we're making sure that kids have a house. And no child should have to sleep in their car or on their street through no fault of their own. Okay, again, um, this video I think is on our YouTube page. So if you want to watch their original voices, you can check it out on your own time, thanks Dylan. And just some slides too, and we'll get to the fair in a second. Okay, great. Um, so where is Family Promise located? We're actually just outside of your neighborhood board, um, on Kukui and Ala Street. So pretty much in the border region, I would say, between the neighborhood board thirteen and fifteen. Um, we're in a building called the Kukui Center, which some of you may know houses a number of nonprofit organizations that serve uh vulnerable families with our children and families. Um, as the video mentioned, you know, family homelessness is not often what you think of when you think about homelessness. And I'm I'm sure it's been a huge topic for this neighborhood board to consider. Um, but actually, according to the federal statistics, the age at which someone in the U.S. is most likely to experience homelessness is under age one. Under age one, followed by ages one through five. These are, of course, not the people you see on the streets. You know, uh, families tend to be a bit more invisible because they're trying to keep their kids out of harm's way. So they're not who gets counted in the pit in the point in time count. They they don't often make it to the uh to the statistics, to the official statistics. But actually, at schools like this, um, they know that uh children, uh students are experiencing homelessness at high rates. Uh, that's why you probably know this school has uh the DOE's Homeless Concerns Liaisons based here. Um, it it is a big concern. Um, and why is this? Ultimately, um, it's driven by the high cost of housing here. A lot of family homelessness is really at its core economically driven. Um, according to the latest uh Alice Report from Aloha Internet Way, forty-four percent of households in the state are struggling to make ends meet. And I know that won't be a shock to anyone here. Uh, but it really underscores, these are the types of families that are coming to us. A lot of the families uh that experience homelessness, that lose their homes, uh, were really just one paycheck away from this. You know, they were, they may have been working, they may have had a stable job, but something happens, you know, so many people are on the economic brink already that if their car breaks down, their kid gets sick, they can't go to work. All of this can cascade into something where ultimately they need our help. Um, and then in the state, this is just one more statistic. For every one hundred low-income families, there are only thirty-eight uh homes that are available and affordable to them. So two and five, right? So Family Promise, we're a community-driven response to family homelessness, and we're trying to mobilize, bring people together uh to solve this problem. Um, we've actually, uh, we're founded in two thousand and six. Um, and since then, we can go to the next slide. We have served over uh six thousand family members, children, parents. Uh, we serve family members of all kinds, aunts, uncles, grandparents, uh, across all of our programs. Uh, and just some statistics. Uh, this is in the past two years. Eighty-one percent of the families that we serve actually go directly back to stable housing, uh, which is pretty good, uh, and in an average of just sixty-eight days. So in just two and a half months, we're helping families go from not having a place to sleep, no fixed address, um, instability, you know, wondering where their kids are gonna go to school, where they're gonna wake up tomorrow. In two and a half months, we're helping them get back to stable housing, permanent housing of their own. Um, and another thing that we're able to do is work with them on the financial and economic aspects. So when families are in our program, they actually end up uh increasing their personal savings by almost seven times, six hundred and ninety-two percent. Um, that's through, you know, just the resources that we're able to donate to them through from our donors, uh, household supplies, things like that, but also the individual financial coaching, workforce development services that we have. Um, Family Promise, one of the other big things that we do, one of our core values is around keeping families together. Um, so running through our entire organization is this commitment to serve families of all kinds. We serve not only single parents, single moms, but we have single dads, uh, two-parent households, sometimes multi-generational families. Really whoever the child considers their family is who we try to serve as a family unit and keep them together. And um, I know that doesn't sound that radical, but it can't be taken for granted. Actually, a lot of um, a lot of services aren't able to accommodate families of all kinds, especially larger families. So that's sort of our niche in the community. Um, and we have a whole range of holistic services, starting from helping families avoid entering the shelter system. Um, from the beginning homelessness prevention, in other words. We have a short-term emergency shelter uh emergency shelter program for families. Uh, we provide short-term rental assistance to help families get back into housing faster. And then we work with families to make sure that they can remain in housing long-term through our stabilization programs. Family Promise is also part of a national network of over two hundred Family Promise affiliates in forty-three states. Um, so they're all independent organizations, but we're able to collaborate, work together, and share best practices from around the country. So this really just sums up what we do in three words: hope, hospitality, and home. We're working with the most vulnerable families and children in our community to help them get back into stable housing as quickly as possible. Um, now, the chair asked me to come and talk about the Kiki Community Fair also, uh, which was a community service event that we had. Uh, we co-organized with Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies last month? No, two months ago now is in April. Can't believe it's already June. Uh, and this took place in Ala Park. Again, just a couple blocks away from the building. Actually, Healthy Mothers, Healthy Babies is also in the same building as us, so that's how this collaboration came about. So this uh fair ended up providing free food, books, clothes, health screenings, uh, and other services to over three hundred members of the community, uh, primarily children, uh, children, families, their 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 family members. Um, and it was a whole host of things. It's sort of like a one-stop shop uh that we developed during the pandemic as a drive-through model. But now that things are more open again, we wanted to open it up to an in-person thing, you know, have activities. And so we had uh lead testing, vaccines, immigration services, health insurance, legal help, domestic violence services, HPD did their Kiki ID service. We had housing help, support groups, and there's probably other things that I missed there too. But we were able to serve a lot of families and children that day. Um, we also had twenty-two community organizations that came together, nonprofits, um, to provide all these services. And we had a whole host of other uh activities since it was this in-person event. Um, so since we thought kids and families are coming anyway, we decided to have things like uh Miss Hawaii did a dance activity. We had carnival games, soccer, yoga, face painting. We had coloring for the kids, uh, music, children's book readings. So it was a whole range of fun activities uh for the community. Um, I will leave it there if there are any questions, but thank you again for inviting me.
All right, thank you very much. So do we have any questions from our audience in-house? Go ahead, Travis, please.
Hi, Travis Thompson. Uh, thanks so much for the uh resources you provided for the community. Uh, several months ago, we had someone come to the meeting and suggest that uh, resources like this actually attract homeless people to our community and that that in fact is causing a problem for this community and that we should in fact stop providing resources because that's just attracting these people. Uh, do you find that this is actually happening or that you're actually able to help people get into staple housing and off the street as opposed to just attracting more homeless people to our community? Uh, and then in fact, we should just ban these services? Thank you. I don't agree with that, by the way, just asking.
Well, um, I I certainly understand where the question is coming from. Um, what I will say is, at least in our own experience at our at our organization at Family Promise, that's not what we see. You know, we don't really have people hanging around our building. People make an appointment, they come, they reach out to us. I mean, we get, you know, dozens of calls a week. So there are a lot of people who need these services, but it's very targeted. Uh, and we actually serve, even though our office is just outside of Chinatown, uh, we serve families from around the island. Um, and so, you know, ultimately, most families want to live where they have social connections. And so, you know, when we're working with them, um, in terms of finding permanent housing, we're often, you know, helping them live wherever they want to around their island, wherever it makes the most sense.
Thank you. Do we have any other further questions from our audience here at the school? All right, here in Nan Sinan, do we have anyone online with a question? All right, Sinan here in Nan. We'll go ahead to the board. Any board members that have any questions? Go ahead, Mr. McDonald, Board Member McDonald, please.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to make a quick correction, I think, to the last commenter. I don't think that anybody said that we wanted to ban these kinds of services. I think that the what the what the speaker at last month's meeting was trying to convey was the idea of spreading more of these services around the island and around Honolulu and not so they're all concentrated in this one particular area. But there was no talk of any banning of these types of services, not that I can recall, anyway.
Yeah, that's good to know. And I will say, you know, we do a lot of work where we're just meeting families where they're at. Um, particularly with our rental assistance and our homelessness prevention programs. They don't even necessarily need to come to our office, we'll go to them.
All right, thank you. Board Member Li, please.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Um, Ryan, uh, wonder if you could share just a little bit of the um more about the numbers of of the folks you had and the programming selection and what kind of turnout you had for each of the different venues? Uh, I think there was some interest in knowing, you know, I think it was some meals were mentioned out. And I just wanted to see if you could comment on the selection, for example, of some of the entertainment that was provided. I knew there was some concern in the community about some of the presenters.
Um, I don't know if I have a breakdown of how many people went to each booth. Um, but um, I think what you're referencing is that we did, so the children's book readings were done by two uh local drag performers. Um, now, they were dressed a little bit differently. I mean, you know, as with anyone who does a children's book reading, they were dressed appropriately. Uh, you know, there were plenty of community members and the news and government officials who who were there and witnessed what what went on. So, you know, we didn't really have any concerns. In fact, we had a lot of people come up in support and said that, say that they had a really great time with the way the children's book reading was done, uh, because it was uh, you know, the performers were able to really engage the kids uh and spark the joy of reading, the joy of literacy by bringing music and performance and just their energy and personality to the event.
All right, thank you. Any other board members? Go ahead, Board Member Russ.
Hi, Ryan. Really commend you for your efforts and your success. Uh, I I think it's an amazing story, um, especially realizing the problems with affordable housing. Like you said, just the lack of affordable housing, the big gap in between. So any story of success just amazes me. I was wondering if you could elaborate on what are the the key tools that you use to be able to take a family that's homeless sixty-eight days later, going through some rental assistance to stable housing? How do you even bridge that gap?
Yeah. Um, well, I think one one thing that I I always see with the families that we serve is a lot of motivation to get back to stable housing. I mean, these are families with children, and mostly young children, as the statistics show. And so, you know, I think there's a there's a realization that they don't really want to be in this situation for longer than they have to be. Um, what we also see is that um the circumstances that lead to homelessness, you know, they can vary, but often there was a specific event. So maybe it was uh someone is fleeing from domestic violence, maybe they lost their job. Again, these are all fixable things in a way. Um, you know, there are there are things that we can address in a specific way. And so to sort of answer your question, I think one of our strengths is that for every family that comes through our programs, that each family is working one-on-one with uh one of our case managers who takes the time to get to know them individually, learn about their individual situation, uh, and develop uh trust, um, so that they are able to move forward in that process.
All right, thank you. Do we have any other board members? All right? If if so, I'll go ahead and ask the last question. So so my question actually comes from the community, yeah? So Salt and White, they advise us about this event taking place. I checked out you guys' website. Great website, by the way, and what you guys do is great work for the families, yeah? And um, to address um future board members, Travis's concerns, think the idea was families, yes, we have no problems. I think families should always be taken care of first before someone that's on the street smoking dope right in front of us, peeing in front of us, and running around naked. And that's what was happening in Chinatown. And that's what people were tired of. With families, yes, agreed that they should always be taken care of first. Children should not be on the streets, right? But my question is now, alluding to the fact that this is a family-based entity. The question is, how did it come about? Because when all the information went out, the information stated that the fair was going on. And I was at the fair all day long. So I got to meet sides. There were sides, there were GANZIT, there were the pro-LGBT, and there were the anti-LGBT. There was against, so there was that conflict. I heard both sides. Um, there was a lot, first time I felt a lot of hatred, actually, towards any one group, yeah? So I felt that hatred that was given to LGBTQ side. But how did it go about that in less than twenty-four hours from the event that drag queens came out to be the ones that were gonna read to our Kiki? Should we have not thought this further? And instead of having drag queens, had a kapuna speaking to our children instead of drag queens? Especially in our community? Because we are, even though we are very democratic leading, we are a very conservative, conservative group. And so this is question that I've been getting a lot of emails for. And so I just want to bring it out. There's no hatred or anything, just to be fair, yeah?
You know, I think um so so there's a couple of things to note with that. The um the the suggestion for, you know, so so why did we have these particular people do the book reading? I mean, you know, we talked to a lot of people, uh, you know, people who suggested the idea, people who were part of the planning, people who came to the event. Uh, and honestly, most people didn't really bat an eye, you know? Uh, people didn't really, and I talked to some people who, and I was trying to explain the situation, and they they didn't really understand what the the conflict even was. And I think it's important to understand that these, uh, in fact, these particular drag queens had done children's book readings in other places in Hawaii uh in prior years without any controversy. Um, you know, the vast majority of people we talked to understood that they were reading books like anyone else would read a book. Um, you know, it's part of being an inclusive community, part of expressing their free speech. Um, and, you know, just part of, I think, what we were ultimately trying to do was just, again, try to capture that joy of reading, uh, because they are very, a- as you saw, engaging speakers, readers. Um, that that's really all there was to it. Now, I will say in future events, uh, we definitely welcome suggestions and, you know, uh, if if people have other great readers for children, um, if people have other ideas of things that we can include in future events, we definitely want to want to hear that feedback too.
All right. Okay, you'll be the last.
Thank you, Ryan. I learned a lot. But I think what really jarred the community was the suddenness of the drag queen and the advertising posters were with them dressed as dress drag queens.
Yeah.
So this disturbed a lot of people because the image of such a kapuna versus a drag queen dressed, a male dressed as a woman and with no cuts, uh, didn't seem too appropriate to lead to youngsters, especially from at-risk families and our people needing help. And not a not a very good example in a way, because you kind of like keep it in a very small circle. We not, we not saying we don't defend First Amendment rights of free speech, but as a nonprofit organization seeking funding to help kids and family, the image is not as, you know, what are called wholesome. Not that, you know, that people view it that way. Because if you were a private entity, nobody cares. But you are a nonprofit uh group, uh, helping marginal groups to gain a certain normacy. And then all of a sudden, uh, two drag queens dressed as drag queens in your 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 posters uh did affect people, impact people. This is the 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 message that's not too good. I just want to share that with you.
Yeah, well, um, so, you know, on on the presentation, it had the um, the official poster that we had for the fair. And a number of our partners, uh, you know, the drag queens included, made their own versions of the poster. Um, I think that's what you're referring to. And so, you know, we didn't um really have control over what um our individual partners, you know, the there were a number of partners that made their own versions and shared them uh without running it by us first. Um, and so I I understand what you're saying. And, you know, I think that um, that is a lesson learned for us, is to make sure we're all on the same page and make sure that, uh, as the chair had said, suggested, you know, when we do public events like this, you know, share it with the neighborhood boards, you know, let more people know what's going on. And we certainly want to do that.
All right, thank you for that. Before we Alright, thank you for that. Before we end the discussion with you, I'm going to allow future board member Travis, I believe you have a question? Sure.
So for board member McDonald, if we're talking about the same time, back, I think it was in April, the person was suggesting that we distribute resources, which I think is great, but their method for doing that, if I recall correctly, was to stop allowing any new resources here in Chinatown, which, you know, is what this board can actually do, which is what I was disagreeing with. But, I mean, I think no one would disagree that we should have more resources everywhere in the island, but this person, I mean, you can call it a ban, you can call it a sopping of whatever, but that was what she was suggesting. And for Ms. Cabala, Chair, certainly I think children, you know, no fault of their own, should be taken off the streets first. I was trying to highlight that there are a lot of great organizations that are, you know, helping these people get off the streets and suggesting that having these organizations here is somehow causing more of the same problem, I think is kind of misled thinking. But I would also remind the board to other comments that, you know, LGBT people are actually more likely to be homeless, more likely to be discriminated against, have violence committed against them, be in domestic violence situations. So to say that these people shouldn't be included in this sort of event, to me, is troubling. But also, you know, these, you know, drag queens have families just like anybody else, you know, these are people that, if you're already homeless and people are already looking down on you, or you feel different because you're homeless and kind of discriminated against, to see someone else who society sometimes discriminates against in their element and helping the community and being a normal person, I think that helps these people with confidence and seeing that they're part of the community too, even if they're homeless or struggling or things like that. So, rather than passing moral judgment, I think anyone that's volunteering with an organization and helping kids should be, you know, their help should be readily taken. Thank you.
Alright, well taken, and just so you know, I don't believe that anyone on this board is anti-LGBT. We're not, and then I have a lot of friends that are gay, drag queens and all that, so this is not about that. As I said, I respect, I went on the website, I went to this event, there was, I don't believe there is any other board member there but myself. I was there and I spent time there, and there was a lot of people there, my old jobs, Aloha Care and all these companies were there doing their thing. So it was well-attended, it was good. It was just the way that in less than twenty-four hours from the event, all of a sudden now that we have drag queens coming to talk stories. And that's what the questions from the community was, yeah? But I understand what you're saying and I agree with you, because you're right, LGBT, especially LGBT kids have it the hardest, and they're on the streets the most, and they're the ones who be taken advantage of and in sex trade and all that. So yes, I agree with you. So thank you.
Can I just add one more thing?
Sure.
Yeah. So there definitely was, as you were alluding to, a lot of, you know, sort of discussion about the event and the days leading up to it. But the information about the event had actually gone out to the community through our own channels much earlier. And so, you know, by that time, that, you know, I think, you know, you started to hear this different take on it, most people had already signed up to attend. Yeah, so the information had already gone out more than twenty-four hours in advance.
Alright, thank you very much. I do appreciate that. I appreciate you coming by. Thank you, and I really did appreciate the fair. It was good fair for the families. I saw what you guys do, and you guys do a lot of good. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Great, thank you.
Alright, next up, we have post-event report on Cinco de Mayo 2023, and I believe Kelsey will be speaking on this.
Aloha, my name is Kelsey Anne Swan Con. I'm one of the organizers for the Cinco de Mayo block party. For the event, we have goat stars, mostly. The DTS said that they have no complaints, Honolulu Police Department said they were happy with what we were doing. Any questions?
Okay, so, do we have any questions from our people here and our audience? Alright, here and now, I'm seeing none. Do we have any questions from anyone online? I'm not seeing any hands. Yeah, he's a board member. I'm not seeing any hands from any one in the audience, so now we'll go to our board member. Board member Li.
Thank you Chair. Ms. Kelsey, thanks for coming to give a report. Got to say that it started out kind of weak. I want to give you a chance to follow up and give us some more robust answers. I'm not sure if you've been in this process before. But several months ago, the board made as a condition of its approval for the event, for your team, I'm assuming you're representing the team, to come and tell us about it. So how about some things as far as numbers, cleanup, when the streets were reopened? What you anticipate doing for next year? What did you learn from this time? Any problems you encountered? Can you please start with those? Thank you.
Yes, so the street was returned at 12:00 AM. We kept our cleaning team on till 4:00 AM. So Saturday morning, the street was clean even after the first Friday festivities after our event. The luas, we noticed that the luas were too far off of our general where the stage was, so next time we'll move them closer to King and New Oanu. We believe that there was about fifteen hundred people there present. Most of them were families, not a lot of people, as we expected, were drinkers. And we had about ten vendors' food and merchandise.
Alright, and what time did the music stop?
The music stopped at 10:00 PM.
Music stopped at, actually, nine fifty-eight. The music stopped at exactly nine fifty-eight. I was there for the whole event, so stopped before 10 o'clock. Board member McDonald, and we'll go back to board member Li.
Thank you. Thank you Chair, and thank you for being here, guys. I was curious if you know if any arrests were made as a result of your event?
During our event, no arrests were made, no medical emergencies, and no complaints, as far as we know. And we don't have access to that type of information, so.
Thank you. Alright, board member Li, did you want to readdress?
Chair, no, thank you. I'll refer back to you.
Alright, board member Russ.
Hi Kelsey, I thought it was a great event. Great to hear that no complaints from DTS, no complaints from HPD. Were there in general any complaints that you received from the community? Very good.
Alright, go ahead, board member Laurie McCarty.
Hi, thank you for your report. I saw in the documents that you sent that you said that you lost $20,000 on the event. Is that correct?
I don't think we submitted anything for this presentation.
Oh, was that last year? Oh, okay, because it said without the ability to sell alcohol that you lost $20,000. So that was last year's document?
Yes.
So was this something that's sustainable for you to do again next year?
Yes, with the liquor.
Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Russ, you finished? Okay, go ahead, board member Li.
Thank you, that you're not losing money. So how much money did you make?
Oh, that's a question I don't.
Right, okay. The question is, when you came to the board, you estimated five hundred people. So you actually prepared for loos and garbage, pick up every profit five, but you actually have fifteen or more people. So you actually jam up a lot more for your bathrooms, toilets, and cleanup and all of that. And that also, when you came to this board, we did not hear that you're going to promote big time the bar crawl and the money charge for the bar crawl without giving specific information to this board when you came here to ask for our blessings. So I would like to remind you that in the future, you should tell us what the program is, because you're collecting money for the public. And we just heard a very bad report from Halal Baloo, where they've been abusing that system by charging people fifteen to seventy-five dollars to bar crawl, promising music from these bars. And none of, some of them were not even aware of, and they were not available. And I think the chair himself feel that one hundred people that felt cheated. So we are very concerned about that, because you are using our public streets to make a profit. And we need to know ahead of time that you are open and that this is accurate information going out. And that we don't like to say, give you our blessing, and then find out from people that, oh, you didn't tell that, you didn't, so the board looks foolish.
So the event is free. It was free. If you wanted to drink on the street, you get a ban after we check your ID, and you're allowed to drink. If you want to participate in the bar crawl, then that's where we charge. If you wanted like a discount on your drinks, then we would charge you for a different risk ban. But to come on to the premises that we showed you on the map, nobody charged, no security checked them, and it was open to the.
It would be healthy also to let us know how much you charge for big drinks and beers, because it's a public event, and that is supposed to promote cultural celebration of Cinco de Mayo. But a lot of people come away thinking that they've been overcharged, they've been ripped off.
Alright, so I do want to clarify one thing. So the hundred calls that I did fill was not for Cinco de Mayo, it was for Halal Baloo, that's number one. I did not field any calls from, or any complaints from you guys. I was there from start to beginning. It was a good event. As I said, the music stopped at nine fifty-eight. The garbage and everything was taken care of. At 12 o'clock, everything was reopened. I was there for the whole process, perfect. The only thing that I saw personally wrong, well, two things. Personally wrong was the bathrooms, yeah? So, and that's a learning experience, yeah? Because we get that for the learning experience, so that's great. The second thing, what I think Shulam Toronto State is that, she felt that because the bar crawl somehow came up and added with this, that it is part of the event. I know it wasn't, but the way it looked like it to everybody else, that it was part of the event. I had people that did ask me, "Oh, they're charging us fifteen dollars." And I says, "No, the fifteen dollars is for a bar crawl," which is totally separate from that. But most people didn't understand that. So we have to be more, we have to clarify ourselves, is that what you want to say? More correctly, we want to clarify that what we're stating is understood by everybody.
Well, the thing is, is disclosure, because when you advertise a bar crawl, I saw your advertising, I saw your promotion on the media, and then while you were presenting a difference to us, you never mentioned that at all. You didn't mention about the charges. So next time, I think for any block party, we'd like to know, for instance, you know, a report that's more accurate than giving, because it is a profit-making thing that the public is sacrificing for you to make a profit. So we need to know, you say, "Oh yeah, we make money," but you tell us you lost $20,000 before, but you won't tell us you're making money. So it's kind of like, wow, you choose what you want to tell us, and we supposed to accept that? Why tell us when you lost money? And when you make money, you don't tell us. So it's kind of fair.
Go ahead, board.
Thank you. So I'd just like to say, I think it was relevant to mention when you lose money, because you can't continue an event if you lose money. As somebody who's been a race director, used public streets, you know, to fund different things, I think it is fair for an organization to do things that are going to make it sustainable for them to do it again. And we had no complaints, it was a good event. I think that they should be commended for that. I hope that we'll have a Cinco de Mayo event next year also. And if it was successful for you, it sounds like it was successful also for the community, and I applaud you for that. So just fix the bathrooms, keep doing what you're doing. I hope you have more people, I hope that you plan for more people, because I think that you can expect more next year.
Alright.
Thank you. James Tennant here.
One more, go ahead.
And I just wanted to let everybody know, Kelsey's up here because she's going to be taking over. We're doing more events, and we want her to be the one to explain to everybody, so for her to get comfortable. I'm going to be busy with other obligations that I got to do, so luckily I was able to get out of my obligation to come here tonight. So, let's start addressing everything one at a time. First of all, when we first came up here, Toulon, we are only obligated to come here to talk about what we're doing as far as the street closure. Right? The event that we're doing closing the street, that has to do with the public. The bar crawl was put on by a private promotion company to do the bar crawl for all the bars that were participating. That had nothing to do with the street closure. The street closure is free, that doesn't charge, we don't charge for the street closure. So just to clarify that. So, next time, we will bring up that, hey, this company is going to do the bar crawl, so you guys have that information of what's going on, so nothing seems like it's hidden, because that's not what we're doing. As far as the $20,000 loss, we're just giving an approximate of what it was last year, because we weren't allowed to do alcohol on the street. We took a substantial loss. And we're still closing out, like for example, GP Roadway, who does all the street barricades and everything, they sometimes don't give you the bill for three to four months. So in, for all the promoters that come up here, when you try to ask for, "What are your numbers? What are your numbers, Lyle? What are your numbers?" right away, we can't do that. It's hard to give you that exact number. I could tell you from last year, because it's a year later, that, hey, we lost a substantial amount. And this year was able to hopefully cover that last year, so we could keep doing these things for the community. That's what we're hoping to do. And it's looking good that we were able to do liquor, and the Liquor Commission was very happy with us. So, as far as all the avenues, Liquor Commission was happy, DTS gave us a good report that they were happy.
Police Department.
The police department gave us, everybody, police department, DTS, and security was all able to leave at 12:00 midnight. That's huge, on a first Friday. We took on the cost to make sure the neighborhood was clean, that's what she meant by we were there till 4:00 AM. We kept our cleaners on until 4:00 AM, because after 12:00 AM, once DTS releases us as far as liable for the street, it's not our responsibility of what establishments, how people come out of establishments on Hotel Street. Our establishment is on New Oanu, our event is on New Oanu, so we don't even program on Hotel Street. But we took it upon ourselves, because of our history and concerns of the public, to keep our cleaning crew there till 4:00 AM, to make sure after 2:00 AM, when all the bars were let out, we cleaned all the streets. And I think we have some pictures we could send over that shows all the streets were clean. But DTS emailed us back that they were super happy, they didn't get any complaints as far as cleaning. As far, you know, with the constructive, what we could do better, the main thing we found out, this is our first time we put liquor just to be in what we call a liquor-controlled area. I know the terms were used before about beer garden and that, we can't do that on a public street. You can't close off a street area and say, "This is only 21 and up." Because you're going to run into the same problems of public wanting to go home. How can I go home if it's going through a street that's only 21 and up? That's never going to happen, you can't do that. So what we call it is a liquor-controlled area, and we made it small, rather than doing the whole footprint of New Oanu Hotel, which these events have usually done. And it was success for us. We feel that it was good, it was controlled. Again, Liquor Commission was super happy, because we kept it really controlled. And what we learned from that, what I was getting at, was the bathrooms, we normally put them on Pawaihi to like, it's bathrooms. Nobody wants a bathroom in front of their business. That's, that used to be our complaint five years ago. Why are the bathrooms in front of my business, right? So, we found a place for the last few events, Pawaihi, but that didn't work for this event, because nobody knew where the bathrooms were, because they were controlled in an area to drink. So what we're going to do is put the bathrooms in the controlled drinking area, and that should help with, I think we took the biggest hit, because everybody came to Hank's Cafe to use a bathroom. We had to pay for plumbing for the whole week after, because our plumbing was all clogged. But, so we learned the hard way, Toulon, but in the future, we will make sure that's taken care of.
Alright, before you go, board member McDonald wants to say something.
Thank you Chair, thank you James, and your assistant for being here and giving this post-event report. My last name is McDonald, but my mother is full 100% Mexican. So, and I was only able to attend this event briefly, as I run a bar that's not in the district. And so I had to get back and oversee the Cinco de Mayo events at the establishment that I run. But I was able to attend this event very briefly, had a great time, I'm very proud. As a Latino, a proud Latino, I was very proud of the event that you put on, and felt like it was a boost to our community. I also would like to add to that, that events like this, I'm. Uh, I also would like to add to that, that, uh, events like this, I'm glad to hear that, uh, your assistant will be, uh, fronting up your organization to, um, host more events like this. These types of events really benefit our community. They drive people from might not normally come to this community to come see what we have to offer here in the downtown Chinatown district. Uh, it's a, it's a, it's an invaluable service that gets people to discover our area and the businesses here. I hear every day the businesses here are struggling because it's a post pandemic environment. There's a lot of debt and things to overcome and other issues that have taken over this community that are preventing people to come here. So events like this really, really greatly benefit our community. And I would like to add to that, if you're somehow able to make a profit while doing that, you have my blessing. Thank you.
All right, and thank you. Before you first go, I do have, um, a business member in the community that asked me to put him be here for reasons that I will not state at this time. But he wanted me to read this. Yep. So my name is Ra, owner of Fred's Sun. I have told countless leaders in the community and anyone that would listen, the only way to get rid of crime is to increase foot traffic. Growing up in Southern California, I know that the quieter it is, the more dangerous the area. Six days a week, I close my doors at six PM. Even at six PM, I'm walking half a block to my vehicle. I have to constantly be worried and looking over my shoulders, the fear of getting robbed, assaulted, worst case scenario, killed is an ever growing fear. If you work over eighty plus hours a week like I do, you sometimes lose track of the time for the day of the week. Not realizing it was Cinco de Mayo, I closed my shop and walked to my vehicle. I was met with surprise at the amount of regular people walking the streets. Only then did I realize they were walking to Cinco de Mayo event. And for the first time since the Chinese New Year's event, I felt safe in Chinatown. I thank James and Hank's Bar for throwing this event. It's more than a vendor having the entrepreneurial spirit. It's about the community and people it brings. We are only safe in numbers. Hardly anyone understands the amount of our financial responsibilities and commitment it takes to throw an event as large as this. Some might complain it's all for money. I say, I hope James and Hank's Bar makes so much money that they will continue to do this every year or even events every weekend. The idea is to bring foot traffic to the community. And if you don't have any ideas of your own to bring, to bring this large of a crowd, then don't get in the way. This is from a business owner in Chinatown who feels that this needed to be said, um, and he asked me to read this because he had some personal problems to take care of. He wanted to be here to address this. As a person, not as Chair, but as a person that went to this, uh, as a president of the Chinatown, um, Gateway Plaza, I can say it. The complaints this year had nothing to do with noise. It had to do with the restrooms. And so this is just, the suggestion that the Chinatown, um, Gateway community is making, tenants are making is that, that, um, Hotel Street is closed anyway. So if you could, we would have put the bathrooms, um, on Hotel Street right where the cops were. We had where the cops was, that would have been perfect. And the other one was you don't have to put it right there in the beer on King Street, the exit going out King Street. Um, you have an entrance in and an entrance out, it'd be better. But all in all, I was there all night long. I stayed there and as you know, I didn't drink a single drop of beer. I was offered many, but I stayed there and I watched the event to make sure that everything was going good. It went good, but Shulam brings up a valid point about the bar crawl and that it should be, uh, uh, everything should be included at one time. So for transparency reason, okay? All right, uh.
Just on that note, real quick. We never programmed right there in front of Chinatown Gateway Plaza from previous complaints. This is the first year that we didn't get a sound complaint. And to my knowledge, the sound complainer is no longer in that building.
Well, just that one, but there are other com, there are other complainers that, because I went to the other one, the other meetings, yeah, but you know, you're right.
Complainer that we got cited last year and had to pay a ticket.
I, I.
All, it was all false.
I brought up the questions to the tenants and they said, no, there was no problem with the noise. It was that people had nowhere to urinate in.
Yes.
And so, but I think I addressed that, um, and this was taken care of. So, um, so there's still a problem also, I putting out, um, the table and the chairs, yeah? So if we can address that with, um, your staff, I would appreciate that at this time.
Sorry, for what?
The tables, the tables and the chairs outside, you know, on any, any other night, yeah? Because.
Oh, Hank's Cafe.
Yeah, yeah, because apparently.
That has been addressed. We stop, there's, there's a chair. Is that still, uh, too large?
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, no, yeah.
So let me continue, James, because, uh.
This is, this is not Cinco de Mayo. This is.
No, 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 no. This has to do your, your operation because it's very difficult.
Point, point of order, point of order. Don't you have to ask the Chair before you can speak?
Yeah, Chair.
Yeah, yeah, so, 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 no, 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 so, so what?
James is the owner.
Shulon, I'm more than willing to speak to you.
No, I just wanted to ask him something. I know, but it's okay. Um, I talked to the Chair about this. Uh, James, it's about your.
You have to ask the Chair for permission to speak.
Would you please be quiet?
You have to ask the Chair for permission to speak.
Hold on, hold on, everybody, everybody, everybody will be quiet. Okay? So, um, we're gonna go ahead and, um, I know it's not about Cinco de Mayo, you got one minute.
Yeah, it, it is not related to Cinco de Mayo, okay? It's, it's an ongoing complaint from the community that your bar puts out a chair, two chairs, sometimes four chairs and a table that is illegal on the sidewalk. And it does impact handicapped people crossing and the police will call. And then I also explained to the Chair, which he called to your bar to tell you, please don't do that. And then it continued because somebody decided they want to do that and go out and smoke. So just because you, you're the owner, so I just wanted to share this with you.
Thank you.
That's how she's doing is sharing the information because.
When we.
And, and Mr. McDonald, he's.
Hold on, Shulon, no, no, we don't need, no, we don't.
Shulon, so when we, Shulon, so when we got the complaint about the table thing that we rolled out, it's even no longer in the business. I put it in my truck, threw it in the dump. When customers pull the chair out, I will bring that up to my bartenders to make sure they don't do that.
That's good, be the good neighbor.
Yes, will do. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Um, thank you. This event was a good event and I hope we do it again.
We hope so too. Thank you, everybody.
Chair, I just want to tell you as a board member, sometimes we have questions that are not particularly, but is related to ownership and operation of a business in Chinatown. Therefore, it is not appreciated when another member interrupts or tell me what I can or cannot do. I did get your permission to ask a question, so we do please, yeah.
It, it, it's recorded. Thank you, we're gonna move on. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Point of order, Chair. To speak at this meeting, we have rules that we follow to speak at this meeting. And every board member and every audience member here is required to follow them. If you want to speak, you have to ask the Chair for permission to speak.
She did ask me and I told her, yes, she came to me, right next to me, she.
Okay, well, nobody heard that or saw that, all right?
Did not see it.
Nobody.
Okay, no, no, hold on.
There it is again, there it is again, somebody has no, she has no permission to speak and she's.
Shulon and Mr. McDonald, you'll drop it right now. Thank you. Next, we'll go ahead and move on to public concerns. Anyone in the public have anything to say? But, go ahead.
James Tennant, business owner, Hank's Cafe. I really would like this board to get it together and get along. Because we need you to make differences. I'm not going anywhere. I got kids rooted in, I'm in Chinatown. I look out for Chinatown. I'm always trying to clean our area as much as I can, New Wano, Chulon. So I respect that if that was an issue with handicap, we took care of it. If there is another issue, please bring it up to the Chair because he could let me know rather than call the police and have them tell me. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, any other, um, people out in the, um, audience that would like to speak? Anyone online? All right, um, we do have, um, as a, um, concerned member, Kevin Li, please.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, just two main things tonight. And, uh, again, I know that being Chair is no easy feat and I do, uh, appreciate the work that you do, Chair. Uh, I just want to make mention that there are some things that we can work to improve and could have improved over the, the past portion of the prior term. And some of the things are just the details. And, uh, as the board knows, I'm kind of hoping that we can improve by taking care of small things first. So I just want to encourage whoever is our next Chair to, you know, work to, work together with the board to share things, to bounce ideas off, to make sure that we have, uh, you know, a full idea of what's going on. Just one small thing, it's still, for example, on the agenda, uh, providing information for our, our viewers to look us up on the Olelo Net On Demand. You know, for several weeks, we've known that the times have changed. Uh, if you're on that website to find Neighborhood Board thirteen recordings. And if you want to use a particular search term to find our board meetings, it's changed. And, you know, just trying to, to wrap these things up. Uh, it, it does take a lot of behind the scenes work. And from one thing I'm concerned and we'll see how the discussion goes about our item five A about allocating our funds for the, uh, the thousand dollars that we've been provided by Neighborhood Commission Office. You know, I just, I'm hoping that we are get some evidence of, you know, behind the scenes work that'll let us know what options are viable and where that discussion goes, we'll see next. But lastly, um, just to disclose, as per Neighborhood Plan, I need to note that I was co-located on the following dates with, uh, more than two fellow board members of Neighborhood Board thirteen. On thirteen April twenty twenty-three at the HPU Crime Roundtable Discussion. On twenty-six April twenty twenty-three at the Kakui Plaza Information Session. And on twenty-seven April twenty twenty-three at the HPU Crime Roundtable Finale Extravaganza. Thank you, Chair Yild.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, um, members, Shulon, Shulon.
Chair, I just wanted to share with you that I've been a long time Neighborhood Board Member and I always observe rules. And I ask permission before I speak or raise my hand. If some member who is sitting somewhere else did not see, he has no right to interrupt me and cause a ruckus. And I need to defend myself because I did ask you permission just now. And then you said, okay, we discussed this before. That I would ask that question. So it's not his right to continue to disrupt me and is bullying. I think this need to stop. And, uh, Mr. McDonald, I'm calling you out for, for not interrupt me.
Okay, so I'm, so, Shulon, Shulon, sorry, Shulon, Shulon, you have a public comments, but as I said, I had done with.
It's concerning. I'm, I'm concerned about this.
Hold on, Shulon, Shulon, as I did with Bob Armstrong, calling out somebody by their name will not be acceptable on this board. If you have this concern, then state your concern, but do not call people out because by calling people out, then you're going to cause that person to call you out and it's going to go back and forth. We're here for the community. You may finish, you may finish.
I, I understand, I understand, but it is that particular person who, who really is causing the problem. It's not me causing the problem because I did ask permission.
Chair.
All right, yes, go ahead, um, go ahead, um, or, um, Lori.
Laurie, um, uh, can you hear me? Is this working? Yes, okay. Um, I'm the, uh, president of the Volunteer Board of the Alzheimer's Association. I'm wearing purple today because this is the, June is Alzheimer's and brain awareness, uh, brain awareness month. Um, there are a lot of things with a lot of Kamuna, Kupuna in our community and even people who are younger than Kupuna. Uh, we are finding, um, therapies now that can actually help to slow and maybe even eventually prevent Alzheimer's. It's important to get early detection. And so anybody who's starting to experience any kind of mild cognitive impairment, please go to your doctor and demand a screening, uh, for Alzheimer's. I did that myself. It was difficult to do that. Um, but the only way that these, um, therapies are going to help is if you're caught early. Just think about breast cancer, very similar in the sense that if it was, if you already progressed very long, then your odds of being able to, um, um, save your life were limited. Uh, my story is my father suffered from Alzheimer's for eight years. Um, I lost him twice. It was a terrible situation to not have my father and see the journey that he was on and he took us with him. Um, at the same time, my mother is ninety-one. She is sharp as a tack. There is no reason that you have to have dementia and Alzheimer's. We're on the path to a cure. And, uh, so my message again is, um, support to, support, tell people if they are experiencing things that are concerning to them, uh, as far as their memory or the way that they think, to please go get screened. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. I do appreciate it. And Alzheimer is something that's really been on my mind lately too. All right, so I'm speaking as the, um, president of the Honolulu Chinatown Lions Club. We wish to invite anyone and everyone that would like to help us come out to clean up Sunya Sun Park and Smith Baritania Park. It'll be happening on Saturday, August tenth at nine o'clock AM. We'll go to twelve o'clock or it finishes sooner before then. Um, at eleven o'clock, we'll be, um, as president of the, um, Honolulu Chinatown Lions Club, I will be donating, um, on behalf of my club, four thousand five hundred dollars to the City Council of Honolulu for the revitalization of Smith Baritania Park. Um, the mayor's office will be there and they've asked a lot of their people in the mayor's office to be there. City Council, um, member, um, Tyler Santos and his team will be there. And I'll be presenting the checks on behalf of the Honolulu Chinatown Lions Club for Smith Baritania Park. So we would like to see everyone if they want to come out and help. Thank you very much. All right, do we have anyone else before I move to the next section? All right, here and non seen up, we'll move to board business. Motion allocation of one thousand dollars for downtown Chinatown Community Outreach Services. And we're going to limit this, let's get through this as fast as possible. All right, let's go. Um, I've been, Lori, you had some.
I, I think the intent of the, um, one thousand dollars is, the intent of the one thousand dollars is to promote the Neighborhood Board. And I think the ideas that have been presented don't necessarily do that very well. Um, but I was thinking, uh, before that the opportunity to connect with an organization and show our sponsorship of them, uh, would give us a way to leverage our one thousand dollars more. The HPU folks, uh, when they came in, uh, with their, uh, proposal and what they were doing seemed like a good thing for us to, to do. If we were listed as one of their sponsors, uh, that might be a way for us to magnify, uh, the one thousand dollars.
Um, Mr., uh, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, you know, we had discussed and proposed a number of different ideas during our last month's meeting. I, as I mentioned during the period of public concerns, I'm not, again, quite sure where we stand with a decision here and what might actually be made. And I don't know if Member McCarty might be able to expand upon how we might specifically allocate those funds. It was for the crime roundtable sessions that, uh, Professor Merkel had organized. And if, again, if that fits into the parameters, but I will let the board know that I will be on board with any parameter, any option that includes a rider for provision of name cards or business cards for members of this board to have to hand out when we are in the community and interacting with members of the community, whether it's businesses or members of the public, inviting them to come to this event or to, for example, the park cleanup. It's just a, a good way to make contact and, uh, even in today's digital age, we'll still sometimes value those cards. So I'm willing to listen to all options. Chair.
All right, thank you, Board Member Ross. Do you have anything on this?
Uh, no, no, Chair, I do not. I really liked Board Member McCarty's idea though.
Okay, hold on.
Uh, so regarding, uh, Member McCarty, um, I think at the last meeting, uh, this was brought up about maybe not necessarily donating money. Uh, but the idea is for the board to get out and do something back for the community. Uh, we'd like something physical would be great. And that's why we talked about cleanups are easy. So from our point of view, we can purchase a lot of supplies with the full thousand dollars, everything we need. And it doesn't matter how many you do, but it could last a year, more or less. Um, but you guys can do monthly cleanups of a certain area, switch it up, do something, people will see that. Um, we're looking at T-shirts anyway, that's outside of the thousand dollars and that'll be something you guys can wear when you're doing it. Um, so a little bit of, um, awareness. The other idea, so cleanups, um, if you guys haven't heard of Genki Balls, I'm not sure how that might be utilized for River, uh, River Street. Uh, because that is a whole nother obstacle. Uh, but that was something that like the Wakey Keyboard Allen wanted doing and it's a great idea. a great idea. Um, but things like that, where we can spend the money on resources that will get the board outside, not helping other organizations. When we talk about business cards, that's a whole nother discussion to have. I don't think that's going to get approved. Um, that's just my opinion, but I believe that that's what, um, NCO would advise as well. So please consider that while we move forward.
Um, Chair?
Yes.
So, um, what if I put together a proposal for a few ideas of things that we might do and what would be required? You know, t-shirts, stuff like that, I'd be happy to take that on and present it at the next board meeting.
All right, so the t-shirts, um, have been supplied for free by, um, the NCO, so we don't have to worry about the t-shirts.
I think, I think the most challenging, uh, the most challenging thing, I think, will be how to get enough of a mass of us together at one time and not violate any Neighborhood Board or Sunshine Law restrictions.
All right, thank you. And before I move on to Shulon, um, Vice Chair first, Vice Chair.
I, I support Lori's idea, um, getting behind a nonprofit that's, you know, invested in our community. Uh, I do recall the last time we did, uh, discuss this at the last session, there was an adopt-a-block, uh, concept, um, that I thought was quite interesting, uh, given that we all come from different parts of downtown in Chinatown. We can all, uh, take personal responsibility for where we are specifically located. Potentially, that could be something that, uh, you could delve into a little bit more, uh, Lori, Lori, with respect to your, uh, your, your research going forward. Uh, I like that idea. It, uh, makes all of us personally accountable, uh, to the community as well as makes good, uh, use of the $1,000 that we were allocated.
Okay, um, Board Member.
Thank you. Okay. Yeah, uh, Chair, I think I forwarded a, um, suggestion to have our neighborhood board members work with DTS to paint, uh, no cars, buses only on, um, Hotel Street because we experienced a lot of dangerous situation. And I think it makes an impact for the public to see us working with city and that we really make a difference by painting no cars on Hotel Street. So it kind of saved people's lives because it's, it's getting dangerous.
Chair?
Um, go ahead.
Shulon, um, I could add that. So what I'm thinking is that I would do, maybe suggest five different things and try to outline them in enough detail that you folks could take a look at them and maybe, um, see which ones sort of rise to the top. Um, I'm, I'm definitely willing to do that, uh, so, so maybe that would, maybe that would help.
All right, before we go to Board Member Li, um, we haven't heard from our member, um, Board Member McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, I recall a couple of meetings ago, I suggested that everybody come up with a suggestion and we could all vote on it, and, uh, I'm not sure how mine compares. Member McCarty has some very good ideas and all the ideas are good. The idea that I came up with was, um, we have a police station here in Chinatown that nobody seems to know about. It's almost like a secret police station. It's not marked at all, or, or it's very difficult to see that it's there. My thought was that, uh, we contribute the money to get a well-lit sign for the front of the police station here in Chinatown, and, uh, maybe it could even shed some light on the surrounding area as well, just to sort of let people know. We have a police station and maybe light, uh, shed a little light on that otherwise compromised corner.
All right, thank you very much. Um, give me one second, I think, um, Board Member Li, did you have something else to add?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, yeah, I appreciate the ideas. Um, it just, I think unless the rules have changed, we need to have allocated these funds before the end of this month, or they go away. At least, we've been trying to get clarification, or if we can place the funds into an escrow account of some type and then draw from them. Uh, what Neighborhood Assistant Buck has described as far as NCO taking the funds and on our behalf securing a number of supplies, I think we'd certainly like to know a breakdown of that and what that would entail and how that would impact what types of activities we could do, if that's the route that we go. But I am certainly curious, and Member McCarty, how we can get your information and deliberate on that before the ability to allocate the funds goes away. So if there's anybody that has the rules, hopefully it's Mr. Dylan Buck.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah, so this shouldn't be a complicated process. Just to be clear, honest, this is money that we secured for our department, for our community outreach, but why would we promote ourselves? So Lloyd, my boss, said, give money to the boards for them to get out in the community and do work. Uh, I like the idea, but it's not going to be approved to give money to HPD who already has their own funding to get a sign. You should bring that up with HPD, and they can get a sign. Talking about adopt-a-block, I think that's a great idea. You're physical, you're out there, the people can see you do the work. Uh, you mentioned maybe getting like our name on some kind of sign. If, if that works, I, I like that idea. I just don't know the procedure on that. I don't have any rules or numbers for you, Mr. Li. I'm sorry, I know you like that, um, but you get $1,000 for the board, the sooner the better. We brought this up back in January, and it's been prolonged ever since. One reason is we can't get through a meeting. Okay? Everyone's passionate here. So if I can answer any quick questions for you that are simple, common sense, hit me.
Chair.
Okay, um, go ahead, Board Member Li.
Thank you, Chair. So, Mr. Buck, representing NCO, do we need or do we not need to have a decision today, given that our next meeting is in July after the cutoff date of 30?
I believe if we do it, uh, next month, July 6th, we can make it work.
Yes. So before I go back to both of you down there, I'm going to do something unusual. I know you're not a board member yet, but you're going to be voting on this next month with the rest of us, but we are going to move this vote to next month. Did you have any ideas, Travis? Not at this time, I just wanted to include you because you're going to be voting with us. Okay, go, we'll go ahead with McCarty, then McDonald.
Thank you, just, um, one, can we, can you provide the objective of the $1,000? How will you guys determine it was successful? That will help me, um, when I'm creating some options to be able to do that.
That's a great question. We were hoping that since the announcement, I believe it was in January, the Conference of Chairs, that this was announced, and, yeah, it was, I want to say, one or two boards have been utilizing the funds. One board, I believe, was Conny Oe. They participated in a parade, um, so there was money for a permit for them to go out, represent and participate in something for the community. That's one example. It's successful because there's a bunch of people there. Everyone showed up from the board. Kailua doing the same thing, uh, July 4th, uh, parade, Independence Day, that's coming up. Um, other than that, I believe Waiki Ki is signed up to do the Genki Ball thing. That should be happening in January. Um, that's kind of a two-week process because you make them, they dry, then you do the service. So that hasn't happened yet. The sad part is, we don't have the statistics because the boards haven't taken the initiative to do it yet. Um, I could be missing a few boards, they might have done some cleanups. I know I AIA is pretty, um, adamant about helping the Pearl Harbor Bike Path cleanup. I'm sure you support that, and you might have seen some of them out there. Um, they don't all have shirts yet, that's something we're working on, and that's separate from the funds. I wish I could answer your question more, but it was a really simple idea of, can we get the, the board out of these meetings?
So get the, get the board out in the community. So there's no objective to get more engagement of the community at our meetings? That's not an objective.
You being out there with t-shirts representing.
So you think that will lead to?
We have the banner for you guys. Um, we would like the banner, we posted on the school, so when people drive by, they know that this is your meeting location.
Okay.
That's an idea that we're going to propose to the principal, we got to get approval, but you can bring that banner out to the event you're doing, just like when you guys walked in the Lunar New Year Parade. People saw you. I was with you guys. Um, it was great, the turnout was awesome. So it's things like that.
But we want to do that again.
Absolutely, I'm sure you guys are going to be invited again. So anything you can think of, that has to do with the community, always reach out to us, and we might be able to support you with the funds for permitting and stuff. But just for this, we're really thinking, clean up the community. Every meeting is talking about homelessness, dirtiness, um, crime. I don't know how I can help you with crime, you guys are talking about the cameras, the city is supposed to provide them, there's a timeframe, but simple things that we can do, uh, that can be approved by our office because we're not going to spend it for, for to.
Okay, okay, Chair.
Yes.
So I would be willing to go and just outline some things in enough detail so people could understand what it is that we're thinking about, if timing will allow us to review and vote on, if we can get that on the next, I'll try to get it out before the board meeting so people can look at them, and then maybe have a discussion. If anybody, if somebody has an idea, um, please, um, send it to me.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
And then, um, I, what I would like to do, I, I guess, I'm hoping to move this forward is what I'm trying to do, and just to be able to have any input from people, but just put some, a couple of proposals together that, um, maybe just sort of, put it in enough detail that people can make a decision on.
Thank you, I know that, Mr. McDonald, you mentioned this, I think it was two meetings ago, let's come prepared, let's get this done. You can understand our frustration when we announced that every board gets $1,000 and no one's jumping on it, and we're going month by month, and a lot of it doesn't have to do with the ideas, it's really just getting through these meetings. We spent a lot of time on HPD today. So, I'll leave it to you guys.
Okay, so, um, do I have to make a motion on this? There's no motion and there's no more discussion, we're moving on. Okay, yeah. So, I think we can agree with McCarty, McCarty's dollar. Yeah, go ahead, um, Board Member McDonald.
I was going to ask, and, and again, I'm not married to this idea, we don't have to use my idea by any stretch of the imagination, but I was going to ask Dylan, he said that we would make HPD pay for it, could we put on the sign on the police station, like, sign donated by NB13, and maybe that would work?
We're not interested in donating funds, we'd like the board to do real work back for the community.
Okay.
There was no work being done there.
Okay.
If you can understand.
All right, all right, so I like the idea of letting Board Member, um, Laurie, to go ahead with this. So, um, we can move forward with this? With, yeah, yeah, so with the understanding that we'll come forward on July 6th and take a vote on this.
And with my commitment to get it out.
Yes.
Before July 6th.
Right, yes.
So that people can look at it.
Laurie, uh, could you fill me in before the next meeting on all of your ideas, the details, whatever it is? Perfect, and then we can drop it in the Google Drive so all the board members can see, but I really want to come prepared with a direct answer from my boss that says, what will work, what won't work, why not? And that way, when we come to them, they think, I can show.
Let me try to get it done in the next, within the next two weeks.
Yep.
And get it, uh, get it out, out for just sort of review and comment and, you know, any of those kind of things, so that ideally, you know, there's three of the five ideas that people don't see as that attractive, and two that are maybe closer to being something that we want to do that we can tweak and, and move forward.
So you, you send that to me, I'll mass email it to the board, I'll BCC everybody. Please don't respond and start having open conversations, that were, that's where we have a conflict of Sunshine Law. But you can all hear the updates from me and my team. Thank you.
Great idea. Okay, so we're going to go ahead and move forward to motion of approval of Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board Number 13 Facebook Account. So, do we have any discussions on this, sir? Go ahead, Vice Chair.
I guess, this is like, you know, one of the issues, right? Um, I feel like the reason why this exists is because the name was misappropriated for a long time, uh, and, uh, as you know, Mr. Armstrong, I don't want to disparage him, he's not here. In my opinion, utilize it as his own sounding board, uh, and misled, uh, the community into thinking that he represented and spoke for us, uh, which is why the name was changed. Um, it's unfortunate that we have to do this, but I, you know, of course, we have to make clarity in the community, uh, ensure that, uh, we are all, uh, together in what's rep, what's presented on our behalf. That's it.
All right, um, any other board members, anything to say on this? Shulon Shubrakwak, followed by, um, Board Member Li.
Well, just to give a little background, Chair, uh, when Sean Hamomoro was the director, he gave us encouragement to set up, you know, to, to promote the Neighborhood Board. So the idea came out about the Facebook for Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood 13, which we promoted, uh, the agenda, um, promoted, um, things discussed, and then to, to spread awareness. So we did have a lot more attendees. And plus, Sean and I and a few people went around the neighborhood and put up posters about Neighborhood Board 13 and what we do, how they can participate and stuff like that. So it went on very well with no complaint, until a few years later when we had changes in the chairmanship, then, um, then led to complaints that they wanted to have administrative powers, uh, they wanted the site down, they wanted to control the site. So we went to NCO, and then, um, Lloyd asked me if it's possible for me to take it down. I said, no problem. I took it down. But then Mr. Armstrong started up a, a very confusing, uh, Facebook page called, calling itself Chinatown Downtown Neighborhood Board 13. And it wasn't promoting anything to do with this board, but first, it was more a personal campaign on things. So it led to this kind of situation now, that you set up the new Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board 13. At the time that, when I set it up, we did that board approval, plus NCO's blessing, just to make that clear. So I really didn't appreciate all that hassle that these, some members of this board, or let me, uh, saying that they want to control the board and I'm not supposed to have it. So I didn't have it as a personal site, it was as a, um, favor to manage the site on behalf of our board when I was chairman. So I'm, I'm no longer chairman, so I don't have to control the board or do anything other than a personal favor to this board that I was promoting. So I changed it to, uh, Downtown Chinatown Community Advocates from the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board 13, just to disclose to you, okay?
All right, thank you. So, um, Board Member Li.
Chair, thank you. I just want to agree with, uh, Member Shubrakwak on the issue of confusion, and if I can bring some historical perspective to the issue, um, it is true that back, uh, in around 2019, 2020, this board did go through a period of time called the Facebook Wars. There were at least three Facebook pages run by various members of the board who were on and off the board, uh, this board at the time. And it is true that we did get a, uh, judgment, if you will, from, uh, the Neighborhood Commission Office at the time. This was relayed to us on March the 1st, 2021. We were advised that another solution would be for the board to adopt an official page recognized by the city and county of Honolulu through the board action requiring two-thirds vote to post official updates, which can also be used to livestream meetings. Usually someone is nominated to administer the Facebook page during the meeting, and all board officers have access, passed on if a new board is elected. So, the issue at play is this, there were, as I said, three boards that were three Facebook pages, all with similarly confusing names, and it was clear that general person in the community, if they did a Google search, let's say, on some of those relative terms, they could come across any one of those three pages and might not know what was the quote-unquote "official" page. And we did propose some options at the time to see how we could establish a point of social media that could be carried on in perpetuity by the succession of chairs of the board. And, uh, and that, you know, the resolution of that, I think, as Member Shubrakwak mentioned, there were some board, uh, Facebook pages that were renamed to try to take away some of the, the confusion. So when this issue recrudest a couple of months ago, and we had a new Facebook page, which is named as closely as I can tell to something that attributes to, uh, the Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board 13, or includes as many of those parameters as possible, uh, you know, this is why I proposed that we put on the agenda a couple of months ago, this is the, what's going on, recrudescence of the Facebook Page Wars. The concern that I have about the current page is that, again, it, it talks about how any of the Neighborhood Board members could be administrators for the page. I personally don't have a Facebook account, so I, I cannot, and yet, it seems that an average reader of the page might see some of the first-person pronouns used in some of the postings and could legitimately be confused. I think that was actually expressed in a comment as recently as 12 April 2023, where someone asked, you know, since you're using the first person here, may I ask who you are? So, again, uh, because I'm not, and each of us, I think, are able to necessarily, uh, review or, or decide the appropriateness of certain posts, that certainly is going to be an issue. So my concern today is this, do we have and have, do we have a record of this current page, have been voted on, uh, in a two-thirds, uh, by our board to be active? I will draw attention to information that's on the Neighborhood Board, rather, the Neighborhood Commission Office page for Neighborhood Boards, which talks about addressing, uh, social media use by Neighborhood Boards, and it goes through processes, and it does also talk about, uh, the members should pass a motion for the creation of a committee to develop and manage a board social media page. So I'm going to pause like that and reserve the rest of my time for later. So I'm gonna pause like that and reserve the rest of my time for later on, but I'll give it back to you, Chair.
Alright, Board Member McDonald. Thank you, Chair. Uh, I have a lot of concerns about this, and I think that there's really one of, there, this can go only one of two ways. The first way, which I think is the lesser of the two, is that, uh, creation of a Facebook, uh, Downtown Chinatown NB thirteen Facebook page is created and any board member can post on it whatever they like at any time. And, uh, and so any, any board member can go on there and post their opinion, and it should be disclosed that it's the opinion of that particular board member and not the opinion of the entire board. Uh, and that would be the only way I think that a Downtown Chinatown NB thirteen Facebook page could exist. The other option that I feel is probably the better option is that we ban any board member from including the name Downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board in their Facebook page. Doesn't mean you can't have one, but just don't call it that. You call it Downtown Chinatown News, Downtown Chinatown Bulletin Board, Downtown Chinatown Updates, uh, something like that, so that, uh, there's no, so that people understand that you can post whatever you want on your page, but, uh, it doesn't represent the feelings of the entire board. I think that, that, I think that method would, would do the best to reduce conflict among the board. But the other one where anybody can post on there and just claim that it's not the opinion of the entire board is the only other way that I think it works. Thank you.
Go ahead, go ahead, um, well, Vice Chair.
Yeah, no, well, clearly, you know, this only involves like Bob and, you know what I mean? So if, uh, the board is amenable, can we maybe address this at the next meeting and where he's present? And so we can hear all sides of the issue and then kinda handle it that way.
Okay, um, I'll take that into comp. Um, go ahead, um, Board Member Ralph.
Uh, I just want to voice that I really liked, uh, Board Member McDonald's first idea. I think part of a Facebook page just with, uh, the Neighborhood Board Thirteen on the name is, is to promote engagement amongst the community. And, and it can do a really good thing. It's supposed to be fun. It's supposed to be light. And I think the idea of Board Member McDonald of having that disclaimer of a pinned post right at the top saying, hey, each post by a particular board member is just their individual view and, um, you know, and then we can talk about guidelines as we go, as problems arise. We can use the public concerns portion of these meetings to bring up concerns if there are any concerns. But with that, I mean, I think, I think the, uh, the current page, um, that's up right now, I think Chinatown Downtown Neighborhood Board Thirteen, I think that is the page that works. I, I would hope to, uh, make a motion to go ahead and vote on making that our official page.
Okay, so before we go for that, um, I'm gonna say a few things, yeah? I'm gonna end this at this point. Um, I created Neighborhood Board, um, Thirteen Downtown Chinatown as an official page of this board because we had permission and it was approved back during the times of NCO, um, Sean Hanamoto. So it was approved, so it carries on because it's something that is like a, it's like a living document. It goes on and should be passed from chair to chair. The thing is, you cannot make a committee to run this because Facebook will not allow it. Facebook, it has to come from an individual who creates the page. So, but, that being said, and this is gonna be, I'm gonna tell you why. But that being said, any member that is a board member should have accessibility to it and to be able to be a part of it. I agree. Um, I don't believe that we should take a vote and make a motion on it now. I stopped, um, answering and I stopped posting anything to that page because I wanted to address this. First, before we move any further on this, we should have a downtown, we should have a downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, um, page. We should, definitely. And then as a new chair comes on, they no longer become the, the head administrator, but it goes to the next chair. But everybody on the board is an administrator, no matter what, whoever it is. But I agree with Vice Chair Fitzsimmons. We should table this till next month so we can get Bob Armstrong involved in this, since this all runs around his. So I, I would like us to table this till next month, if that's okay with the board. Any objections? Any objections to this?
No, um, can't.
Nope. Okay, so thank you. We're gonna table this till next month when, um, Mr. Armstrong is here, to get, to be fair, all the way across, everybody. Alright, thank you. Next, we're gonna go ahead and move on to approval of regular minutes, meeting minutes, Thursday, April sixth, twenty twenty-three, Thursday, May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Alright, um, go ahead, Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move that the board approve the amended circulated meeting minutes, uh, for April as posted on our Google Drive for last month and this month. As you'll recall, ran out of time to discuss these. Uh, the minutes as displayed here on the screen and is available on our public facing page include, uh, a number of handy dandy hyperlinks that will permit future readers to click through and follow through with documents and make sure that they have a full understanding of what was going on, what was discussed. At the foot of the document, again, as noted earlier during public concerns, it's been updated to reflect the, the new times that our rebroadcasts are shown on Olelo on, uh, the cable television and also the search terms that can be used to actually find all of our instances of our past shows, uh, which for some reason changed over the past couple of months. Uh, similarly, uh, the meeting minutes for May of this year are prepared, have been viewed. If the Chair would entertain taking these as a bundle, we can do that. And again, I hope that this is fair notice for next month on the agenda that we'll be able to take care of uh, the meeting minutes from twenty-one December through March twenty twenty-three as discussed. Thank you.
Alright.
Thank you. Second motion.
Wait a minute, um, so you're making a motion right now, right?
Yes.
Okay. Motion and second?
I would like to second the motion to, um, to vote to, oh, I won't clarify it then. It's to vote to, uh, to approve all of the bundled minutes for the two meetings.
Uh, yes, just, just for the two months. That's all we, we're able to amend the, the agenda for this month. We'll save it for later.
Yeah, so I wanna be clear that we're voting on two meetings minutes.
Just to be extra clear, um, so the April minutes, uh, were circulated as my draft and then the May was circulated as Secretary Li's draft. So the April minutes will be approved as amended and the May minutes will be approved as written.
Yeah.
Oh, that is, that is not correct. These were mentioned specifically to be the two versions that are on the, uh, public facing Google Drive for this month.
Yeah, I believe we're talking about the same thing. You want both your minutes that you wrote to be approved, correct?
If I'm correct, which, yes, the amended draft meeting minutes as circulated. I think, Vice Chair.
I think everyone's on the same page.
Yeah, no, I, the, the, the one thing, the one thing I have issue with, right?
Alright, so, um, go ahead. We're go, we're gonna go into discussions as nobody else said. Go ahead, um, Fitzsimmons, Board Member Fitzsimmons.
I have no issue with, uh, the April minutes. Uh, the May minutes are, I don't think they're accurate. Um, and they're disparaging the neighborhood board and they're kinda biased, in my opinion. Um, especially with the feeling of vacancy area all the way down to up until May motion postponed this agenda on page two. Um, for those reasons, I, I do not, uh, support, uh, the approval of the May minutes at this time or vote for it.
Chair, I'll take that as a friendly amendment and I will change the main motion to adopt only the circulated revised draft meeting minutes for April twenty twenty-three and we can take up the May minutes as a separate motion.
Okay, um, do we have a second on this?
Second it.
Okay, alright, uh, discussions?
Yeah.
Board Member, go ahead.
For the amended April minutes, uh, that was circulated by NCO, um, I would support that. For the May, I, yeah, just the April down, right? With our April, so, yes, okay.
Any other discussions on April? Alright. We're gonna do a real call.
The motion on the table is to approve the April twenty twenty-three minutes, um, as circulated by Member, uh, Secretary Li. Um, is that correct, Mr. Li?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Alright, Fitzsimmons.
Support by.
Isokani.
Aye.
Moore. Uh, he's online, but I don't know if he's. Alright, Lai.
Aye.
McDonald.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye.
Schubert Cock. Sturgis.
Carvalho.
Aye.
And one more time for Moore. Alright, motion passes. Thank you.
The next one we're gonna be talking about is the Thursday, May fourth, twenty twenty-three. Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. I understand there were some questions about the amended draft initial meeting minutes for May. I'm happy to entertain those. I do have the document up live and can make any edits that could be entertained and, uh, hopefully we can resolve this this evening. Thank you.
Board Member McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we vote to approve the, uh, the minutes of the May meeting as rewritten by the Secretary and we can, if we don't approve it, then we can, uh, entertain, uh, a new, new May minutes for the, at the next meeting.
Board Member Fitzsimmons.
Uh, yeah, no, it's, the minutes are important.
I agree.
I've actually cited minutes in my, like, legal research for, for other matters, okay? So it's important that they're accurate depiction of what occurred. They're also a record of, uh, the issues that were discussed. My opinion, the May minutes are not accurate at all. Uh, they're completely inaccurate and they're biased, especially with respect to, uh, the filling of vacancy portion. For that reason, I don't think it's appropriate to vote on it now. Um, and that's my two cents.
Alright, um, go ahead. Um, we're gonna go with, um, McDonald then Lai.
So I agree absolutely, Member Fitzsimmons. And, uh, that's just why I wanted to call the vote was to see if, uh, people also agree that, that they just, that they feel like the minutes are, need to be amended or updated. So if we defeat the approval of the minutes, then it needs to be updated. If not, then needs to, uh, then it goes in.
I thought we, we were the motion to only, uh, approve the April minutes and then to table the May minutes. I thought that was the previous motion. Or just to unbundle them, right?
I think this is, there's a second motion now.
So we unbundled it, yeah. So now we're just on, only on the May. Okay, um, Board Member Lai.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, I'm just scrolling through the live draft of the May meeting minutes and I understand there's concerns about the, was the appointment of the, the filling of the vacancy?
Yeah, no, basically the, uh, the minutes read like the NCO, uh, didn't do their, didn't follow the neighborhood plan. The minutes read like the NCO violated some right that Mr. Armstrong had. The minutes are completely silent as to why Mr. Armstrong was removed in the first place. Um, and so if you wanna make an accurate record of things, let's make an accurate record of things.
Okay, and we're gonna, um, since he addresses Lai, we're going back to Lai, then we go to, um, Schubert Cock. Alright, Lai.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, so, uh, Vice Chair, yeah, again, if, if there are concerns, I'm happy to receive, um, suggested amendments to the draft and if we need to incorporate them, if you don't have them prepared in writing tonight, I understand, we can probably, again, add this to our mega list of, uh, of amendments uh, for the meeting minutes for the first week of July. But, uh, yeah, the, um, I remember there was one particular member, I believe it was Member Moore, who had stated during the, the period that he didn't want to consider addressing the incident that was precedent to the, uh, the vacancy of, of the spot. And, uh, so I'm happy to entertain any proposed amendments that you might have for next month.
Alright, thank you. Go ahead, Members Schubert Cock.
Uh, Chair, thank you. Uh, we were there at the meeting, I think, um, the editorizing of the, um, circulated official minutes, uh, was not, not acceptable to me because it's an opinion that, uh, piece by Secretary Li, uh, in his opinion against NCO, uh, for, uh, removing Robert Armstrong for the remaining of the year. Um, and so the discussion that issued that he needs to be, um, nominated and then to be voted on as, uh, his own replacement. And then all the other opinions that was in this, uh, amended Lyle, uh, minutes are not accurate. So I would vote against it.
Chair.
Alright, so we're gonna take one more discussion. Go ahead, Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. I, I know that, I trust that the board appreciates that, you know, the minutes that I create for this board painstakingly every month are based on an review of the recording that's posted on Olelo Net. And again, if there are suggested changes to the draft, this has been available for, uh, review and receipts that we can hammer these things out before they come to the public here. But I would certainly hope that there's nothing that's in Filling of Vacancy One at Large section that is not either a quote that was made or a statement that was made. But I, I just hope that there's, if there are things that are deemed to be unsubstantiated suggestions, but were not reflected the things that were said, which is what our mandate is with the neighborhood plan, to reflect what was said and discussed. That's what I strive to aim for. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, this is just a comment. Um, I hope this helps. I'm not trying to take up more time here. But with the minutes, we are constantly arguing about what is in the minutes. Um, whether you write too much or too little, there's always gonna be an argument that it's out of context, or it's missing this, or it's biased, or anything like that. Um, as an office, we're really trying to move forward and we're looking to change the style of meeting minutes and produce a rapid, rapidly available YouTube video with timestamps that will be time stamped on the minutes as well. So when you look at the document, we are not arguing about who said what. You're gonna go straight to the video and you get to watch everybody say what they said. In context, out of context, whatever it is. So I hope that this helps and moving forward in this next term, that's something that we're trying to, so please consider that. Um, I don't know how we're gonna vote tonight, but just moving forward, keep that in mind, that what we're trying to do as an office is to help everybody because we're constantly arguing about this and it takes, just like Mr. Li said, it takes hours to write the minutes. I mean, it takes me like three days to go through the three-hour meeting and try to do a transcript of everybody and to do it without, to do it appropriately. It's a tough, it's a tough job. But thank you.
So, um, I'm gonna finish this up. I did also, um, get to re-review this this afternoon. Um, and, um, I don't feel that the minutes are fair to what had happened that particular day. And I think that we need to revisit this and we need to go ahead and table this for next month so that we can give Mr. Lai more input as to this. This is my opinion. It's gonna be up to the board to be, do whatever they want to do. I'm gonna, guys, we got less than half an hour to go through and to finish this up, okay? So as I said, that this was gonna be the last, I'll go ahead and allow one minute each for, uh, Mr. McDonald and Mr. Lai. Mr. McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. So I, in, in agreement with Member Fitzsimmons, I think the minutes are important. They should be accurate. I'm prepared to vote against the approval of the May minutes with the hope that, uh, the member will, the objecting member will submit, uh, the changes to the minutes that he'd like to see so that at next month's meeting, because it's it's important that the minutes are accurate, but it's also important that we get them passed and entered into the record in a timely fashion. So I can vote against them today. Uh, I just hope that we, we have, uh, something to vote on next month. Otherwise, I might just vote for what we have already.
Okay, um, Board Member Lai.
Thank you, Chair. It appears that, uh, there will not be a motion made to vote and to adopt the revised preliminary draft meeting minutes tonight. I will note that we've heard a lot of concerns voiced about what the minutes are not, but I haven't heard what they should be. I've read each of the sentences that are in the public testimony section, uh, that describes the discussion prior to the ultimate appointment of Member Isokani that evening. Uh, and I, I really would like to hear from the board either tonight or in the next couple of weeks, hopefully within the next two weeks that we have some time to prepare before the next month. What is in this draft that is not correct or was not said? If there are things that need to be added, please, yes, bring that. We can make these as long as they want. They're digital. They're not gonna be reprinted. There are no more paper printing costs, no more mailing and stamps. So it's fine. We're in the digital realm now. So I do. So I do welcome that, and I, I appreciate the comments.
Alright, no, thank you very much, so we'll go ahead and table this for next month, alright, so we'll go ahead and, everyone, if you have a suggestion, make the suggestion and send it over to Mr. Li, so he can get it to us immediately, so we can get this corrected and fixed right, okay? Go ahead, the, what were you, go ahead, go, board member, uh, part.
I think there's a motion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
Go ahead, board member.
There's a motion, so we gotta, we gotta vote. I made the motion, but we can vote it down, for sure.
Sorry, yeah, I thought you made a motion, I wasn't sure, I wrote it down, but then I didn't hear a second, and we just kept going into discussion, we're all out of order here, is there a second?
Okay, hearing no second, it doesn't move forward. Okay, so, uh, is there any objections to postponing this until next month? Not hearing none, we'll go ahead and move forward, next we have the resolution, requesting the Honolulu City Council to conduct a public hearing on, and vote on Resolution twenty-three dash eighty-two related to council pay raises. Oh, don't worry, I skipped one, I'm sorry, I skipped the, hold on. As a board, board concerns, proposed policy revisions provided to Neighborhood Commission for their adoption, together with the Pro City Neighborhood Board's Adoption Resolution addressing this issue, also portions of such proposed policies and sunshine laws, um, together with Neighborhood Plan's requirement for written minutes, I say that this should be scratched, as this is no longer pertinent, as the Neighbor NCO is no longer following up on this, and things are supposed to be the way it was. Dylan, can you say something?
Uh, yeah, so if anyone's attended, like, the recent commission meetings, Neighborhood Commission meetings, that is, um, there was a proposed policy, uh, there was a first draft that wasn't meant to be publicly distributed, um, but we had to follow a rule, which is called a board packet, so it was publicly distributed, and then some chairs from certain boards were sharing it, and it turned into a big concern that wasn't really there, it was just the first discussion with the commissioners. Um, the one thing that was totally taken out of this draft policy was a three hour time limit, starting from setup and breakdown. I'm here an hour before every meeting, meeting's at six, I'm here from five to about nine thirty, that's four and a half hours, we are not changing that at all, we are limiting the board to three hours from gavel to adjournment based on their agenda start time. If your agenda says six PM, you start at six, and you end at nine, no matter what. So that's, that's number one, that's just been settled, uh, the other stuff was about minutes, um, as per Neighborhood Plan, the Office of Information Practices, um, has supported this, the minutes are the responsibility of the board. We, as the Neighborhood Commission Office, do the board a favor, and I myself draft this board's minutes, um, I think it's a good idea to have a neutral third party that does it, um, there shouldn't be any bias in there, um, but again, we always have the issue of what what should be in there, what should not, the Neighborhood Plan needs to be amended, we cannot get to that yet, but OIP has already, for Sunshine Law, has an updated requirement for meeting minutes, because of technology like Mr. Li stated, we're in this digital age, if you can provide a meeting recording, you don't have to do what is a transcript, you can do a basic summary, and there are four requirements, and they're all based on time, place, um, board members present, guests, board members left, and motions made, timestamping those motions, at the end of the day, all that matters is what did the board decide? We can talk all day, and that will be in the video that is publicly available, we can do that in a week, instead of waiting for thirty days that you currently see on the Olelo service, so we're trying our hardest to get this done, and we'd like the board's support all around. Um, I hope that addresses the concerns, but as, uh, the Chair stated, this isn't really an item, and this is not before the Commission anymore, they chose not to adopt any policy, because ninety percent of what was in that policy is already current practice and written in the Neighborhood Plan. So there was a little bit of frustration and concern raised that wasn't permitted necessarily. Um, if you guys have any other questions, reach out to me and I can talk to you guys.
Alright, um, anyone have any concerns? Go ahead, board member Li, and please make it short.
Thank you Chair, I just call attention to the exhibits A, B, and C that were discussed at the Neighborhood Commission meeting approximately two months ago, when, uh, then Vice Chair Oshiro mentioned that there would be some type of a memorandum distributed to the Neighborhood Board Chairs addressing the three exhibits, and I wonder if you had received that, and if so, if it could be posted and shared on our July, uh, folder coming up. Uh, the concerns that have been raised by members of other boards, you know, did address some of the time issues, uh, that, you know, chairs would be personnel and, and time and staffing related, the issues of the meeting minutes are of chronic concern, the conversion to electronic minutes, um, was of concern because of the accessibility of some of this, and how that would translate to, uh, those who, for example, only access the meeting information in a certain fashion, if we would be able to accommodate that transition, but hopefully technology can, uh, can address that, and, uh, and with time.
Alright, so there is no policy now on this, so, it is what it's always been from, back when you started, back in, I believe you started back in twenty thirteen? No, um, have a lie, I believe you back, you started on the board back in twenty thirteen, so there's no policy change to this, it is as it is, so they dropped the whole thing, everything, so, that's why I'm saying, there is nothing more to go on, and no, nothing of that was received, because there is no policy. Alright, um, go ahead, Mr. Shuber Kwak.
Chair, we should just, uh, move on, and, um, and, and, um, not not adopt any action on, uh, item D.
Okay, anyone else have any questions? Any objections to moving on? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on, item E, resolution, request Honolulu City Council to conduct a public hearing and vote on Resolution twenty-eight, twenty-three eighty-two relating to council pay raises, did everyone have a chance to look at? Does anyone have any questions on this? Board member Li.
Thank you Chair, um, as shared with the members of the board and posted to the public facing Neighborhood Board Thirteen folder for June of this year, uh, the resolution that was circulated and adopted for consideration tonight by Neighborhood Board Thirteen really just sets the stage for our board to garner input from our community about any concerns that may exist about the timing and scale of the proposed and imminent pay raises for the, uh, City Council members and City Council Chair. Um, for the record, uh, move that we read in, uh, Resolution twenty-dash two oh, rather, Resolution two oh two-three dash zero zero four, the pertinent parts I'll display on screen, um, which is resolved that we request that members of the Honolulu City Council accept accountability for a proposed increase of over sixty percent in their respective salaries, and hold a public hearing and council vote on Resolution twenty-three eighty-two, which, to be clear, is a City Council resolution before the twenty-fourth of June of twenty twenty-three, and that the Chair of the Council is requested to refer that resolution to Executive Matters and Legal Affairs Committee for its meeting on twentieth of June, and that if that bill is not so referred, that a majority of the City Council is requested to direct the city clerk to place the resolution on the agenda of the City Council meeting of seven June for appropriate action, including referral to committee hearing and decision making, and, uh, finally, that a majority of the City Council will be requested to schedule a special meeting of the Council for decision making on their Resolution twenty-three eighty-two before the twenty-fourth of June, as per Council Rule One B, and lastly, that we just send this, uh, document, if approved, to the appropriate parties. I make the motion here so we can have discussion, and if there's any input from the public or those who are online, it would be a chance for them to express any concerns pro or con about the upcoming raises proposed for the Council members, thank you Chair, wait a second, if so, justified.
So do we have a second on this? A second, alright, discussions on this, we start off with the, um, people online, did we have, see anyone online? I, I see no one online, and we start off with the people in our school, here, anyone, nope, so we go to the board. Any discussions, and remember we're on time limit, yeah, go ahead, onboard member Ross.
Uh, very quickly, I, I definitely respect the resolution, I do intend to vote no, uh, just basically three reasons. Number one, I think the, uh, salary recommendations are quite reasonable in the context of their duties, number two, I just think that the, uh, overall magnitude of these increases are just a small, small fraction of our city and county budget, so I don't think it's all that significant, and number three, I do believe that the Salary Commission already had public hearings on this.
Alright, thank you, any other, um, go ahead, board member Li, then followed by board member McDonald.
Thank you Chair, one thing I'll point out, and the information that was circulated by those who had drafted the original version of the resolution, point out that the Honolulu Salary Commission did not appear to release or account for the impact that the raise on council member retirement calculations, which, given an average number of years of, of life after retirement, uh, would account for an increase of over five hundred thousand dollars, or an annual pension increase of twenty-two thousand six ninety-seven for the City Council members, and I'm sure that's probably adjusted for the, the City Council Chair as well, so again, the purpose of this resolution to allow and to, uh, permit public to comment on this particular part of the information that has been since revealed, uh, and disclosed to the public, and I think would be, uh, for the board here to vote to approve, would simply say here's one more bit of information that the City Council members should use to know that their constituents across the island are aware of and thinking about, and do the right thing, and give them a chance to, uh, discuss and explain the, the new findings, thank you.
Thank you, um, go ahead, board member McDonald, please. Guys, we got less than fifteen minutes.
Thank you, I just wanna make sure that I understand this correctly, a vote in favor of this resolution will make it more difficult for the City Council to pass their raises for themselves? Is that correct?
If I may address Chair, uh, McDonald, yes, thank you, um, no, the, the, the raise is set to take place, if nothing happens, on July first or thereabouts.
Right.
There are a few members of City Council who would like to, uh, have a further discussion about this, they're now in the minority, so several Neighborhood Boards across the island have posed and approved a resolution akin to this, to send to their members to see if they could just get on their agenda to discuss.
Okay, so I would like to vote in favor of this resolution, the, the, uh, the City Council getting over a six-figure income is beyond my comprehension, that's more than the state senators make, seeing, I would think that the City Council would be a volunteer position, but they also don't do their jobs, they don't vote, they abstain, they don't appear when they're supposed to appear, and, uh, I believe our current City Council member is on.
Alright guys, we're gonna try to limit this, we're less than fifteen minutes, okay, so, go ahead.
I believe our, uh, I, I'm, like, you'll get it after me, right?
Go ahead, finish up, please.
I believe our current City Council member is in Zurich right now, on a gifted trip to see how, uh, rapid transportation works in Zurich, so, I think they're doing fine the way they are, and I would vote in favor of this resolution.
Alright, so next, um, board member McCarty.
That's okay, I'd like to just go to a vote.
Okay, um, I, I agree, we're gonna go ahead and move to the vote, yeah?
Alright, motion on the table is to support, or sorry, adopt the resolution, um, moved by Mr. Li, seconded by Isokani. Fitzsimmons. Isokani.
Nay.
Moore.
Li.
Aye.
McDonald.
Aye.
McCarty.
Aye, and I'd like to say that I agree that the raises and the salaries aren't really out of line, but at the same time, I think the process was sort of backwards.
Alright, thank you, Shuber Kwak.
Uh, nay, but I'd like to make a statement.
Real quick.
But I really think they're working full-time, and every, every council member chairs uh, a committee, and I really think they deserve the, the raise, and they have not had a raise for many, many years, and if you were to, um, take a department head, they make that kind of money, whereas the City Council person, many of them are lawyers as well, and if they were in private practice, they would be making a lot more money, so I am voting no on this resolution.
Alright, Sturgis. Carvalho.
Nay, and I'd like to make one quick fast comment, legislators legislate for three months out of the year, City Council is a year, a, a year commitment, there, it's a full-time job, thank you, let's move forward.
Uh, so the record for the motion, uh, three I, four no, zero abstentions, motion does not pass.
Alright, thank you, so next we'll move on to the elected officials, the Governor Jawspring representative, Sean Hamamoto, and if we can help speed it up, I appreciate it.
Sure, um, thank you, good evening Chair, Board members, uh, Sean Hamamoto at the Governor's office, um, so I did forward the Governor's, uh, news, newsletter.
It's, it's, it's in our documents.
Okay, so, um, in the interest of time, I'll just move on to take any questions.
Okay, anyone have a question for the Governor's representative? You do make it less than one minute, please ask, we, sort of with Mr. Li, please.
Thank you Chair, Sean, thanks for coming, uh, this is related to, um, memorandum from, I believe, Councilmember Dos Santos Tam regarding the DOT, State DOT installation of sound cameras, if this falls under their purview, I just wanted to propose, uh, some additional sites. If this goes to the city and counties DTS, please advise, and I can save it for the next guy.
Okay, I'm sorry, uh, so this is regarding, uh.
Cameras. Sound cameras.
Sound cameras.
And if the State DOT will be involved in those, which they may not given the city-based locations, but if they are, because one of the intersections is at the intersection of Vineyard Boulevard and New Uwannu Avenue as a proposed location, if that falls under State DOT, I'd like to add that intersection to a list of a place that could easily catch a number of loud, noisy, mufflerless vehicles.
Okay, so just to be clear, you're, if the state's involved in that, you want New Uwannu and Vineyard to be included?
Intersection of New Uwannu and Vineyard Boulevard, yes sir. Right, because that's a state road, yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Okay, so I, I would think this would be city, yeah?
Vineyards, I believe, excuse me Chair, I believe Vineyard is state and New Uwannu is city, so when you have that, I don't, I think the question is, it, would the state be involved in that?
Just if the state's gonna be involved, then?
Yeah, because it involves both the city and the state, the intersection.
Got you.
Alright, um, member Shulon Shuber Kwak, please.
Yeah, I would like to convey to the Governor that we're very pleased with the matching fund to the city on homeless, uh, affordable housing, number one, and number two, to move so quickly to place twelve units right across from Queens, uh, to help those, um, you know, that were discharged from Queens to have a place, and I hope he will be able to build more town hallies like that, and that we fully support his, uh, hard work, and that we wish him well.
Good, thank you.
Alright, anymore, um, any, anyone else, so please, keep, um, your questions under a minute, so we can get through this, we've got a lot to go through, so go ahead. Mr. Board member Li.
Thank you Chair, Sean, just to finish up, can you give us an idea of what are these large gravel pit beds that have been installed near the Capitol, between, um, Capitol grounds and Iolani Palace? I don't know if it's a water retention area, or if it's just temporary, but it's like a, a big rectangle of gray rocks.
Alright. Yeah. Yeah, you can look at it right there. Okay?
Thank you. Happy to follow up on that, thank you.
Um, any other board members with any questions for the Governor's representative? Alright, hearing none, seeing none, thank you very much, we'll see you next one, I do apologize, thank you. Next we have Mayor Rick Blangiadi's representative, Ian, are you there?
Hey, Board, uh, Chair, again, Ian Santi, Deputy Director Honolulu Emergency Services Department, um, gonna start off with some announcements from the Mayor's office, again, rail opening phase one is, um, they're gonna have a law officially begin interim passenger operations at two PM on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, with a grand opening celebration at the Halava Rail Station with dignitaries and entertainment, first of the Sea Trail Project covers roughly eleven miles from the Koalakai Station in East Kapolei and the Halava Station near Aloha Stadium. All rides in the new rail system will be free the entire opening weekend from two PM on June thirtieth, the data system opens until the last train runs on Tuesday, July fourth. Additionally, the bus will be waiving all fees between July first and the fourth, between two and six PM on June thirtieth. Um, beginning on Saturday, July first, the full, the first full day of rail service passengers must have a valid HoloCard in order to take advantage of the free service, ro, free fare services, and, um, you learn more about the opening of the phase and the free weekend at www.honolulu.gov backslash rail. Um, over the past ten weeks, the March twenty-first to May twenty-fifth, Mayor Blangiadi completed, and his cabinet members completed eleven town hall meetings from Kahali High School to Wainai, Laie, Ava Makai Middle School, and many points in between. Um, we appreciate everybody's opportunity, um, to come and have their voices heard, nearly two thousand residents joined in these meetings to make their voices, um, heard, and the last thing of the announcement here is, you can read about the city's unified voice and Red at a wall, who business this recovery grants, the purchase of a Wahewa property to add affordable rentals to the city's inventory, um, and the birth of the baby rhino at the home. um, and the birth of the baby rhino at the Honolulu Zoo. Uh, there's all these articles on the newsletter at oneohahu.org newsletter.
Alright, um, go ahead.
No, no, and the next thing is, uh, the twenty twenty-three Neighborhood Board elections have ended, and we would like to extend our gratitude to all candidates and voters, and the results are not available online, as you guys have already discussed. And I have four, five questions from the last meeting that needed to follow up. Um, Chair, Board Member Li, I think, one of the question was, he wanted a little bit more information about the mean effective cost to taxpayers, and that, that information, if you just look at the number of, and he was concerned about the, there were still nineteen members, there were still in housing, but twenty-five did not complete it. So if you look at the mean number, just based on that information, it's about thirty thousand dollars a person. However, that's not a fair answer, because again, that also, this, this money is still saving taxpayers' money, but because those individuals that weren't in the housing would actually be calling nine, nine-one-one, would be in upwards of almost quarter million dollars of spending to transport them to the hospital. Um, handicapped curbing, it was requested that the city reconstruct the handicap curbing fronting Singchung, Songchinyong Bakery in Monarchia. Um, request for curb ramps fall under DDC, so DDC, um, that the bakery street was constructed in two thousand and three, the city's ADA final transition plan related to curb ramps. Um, the intersection, the city transition plan addressed all the intersection and marked crossings in the downtown area along New Uanu and Smith Street to ensure curb ramps are provide accessibility to the maximum extent feasible. Specific damaged sidewalks, including curb ramps, may be reported to the system through the three-one-one. The intersection of Baratania River Street is on a bridge deck, construction of a new ramp on existing bridge is not practical due to structural issues. Uh, the next question is about requesting that the city replace the brick flooring along Fort Street Mall. Uh, that is under the DPR and DFM jurisdiction, and it involves that the Department of Facility Maintenance is waiting to the Parks Department to cut the tree roots. As soon as that's completed, DFM will begin repairs. The ammonia smells on Fort Street Mall, uh, DPR is saying, you know, May twelfth, twenty twenty-three, maintenance staff treated the ammonia and urine smell with ozone spray. Um, and they have designated a dog relief station. Please contact DFM in the area if there's any further questions. Uh, and the last on the Fort Street Mall Portuguese Monument, uh, DPR only maintains the area, so waiting on the, the Mayor's Office of Culture and Art to repair the monument at this point, and we'll get back to you in the next meeting. That is all I have, and I appreciate everybody's time.
Alright, thank you, so we got less than eight minutes, guys. So if you have a question that you can email, I would appreciate it, if you wanna speak and ask a question here, go ahead. Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair, Mr. Santi, I'll throw on the screen, and I will follow up with email, but with the sound trap cameras that, uh, we've understood, there may be at least two installed in our area. But those of us who are in the, in the zone and deal with this day and night, I wanna propose, uh, four additional intersections that I think would be very effective. If people knew there was a structure there to remind them not to gun their engines, these would be they, New Uanu Avenue and South Baratania Street, South Baratania Street and Bethel Street. And then we have, uh, again, Vineyard Boulevard and New Uanu, and then, uh, New Uanu and South Baratania Street. These, these are all listed here, I'll certainly zap them over to you as well. Um, and I just wanted to point out a couple of other signs that were brought to my attention, some street signs at the intersection of Kukui Street and New Uanu Avenue. It looks like some of the turn lane signs have been shifted around and are blocking the, uh, the LEDs displays that are showing how much time is left to cross the street on, on those two intersections as marked on the screen there, but I'll communicate these to you, thank you.
Alright, thank you, anyone else on the board? Nope, alright, thank you, Mr. Santi, I'm gonna move on now. Next, everyone else will email you if they have anything else on this, I do apologize. Next we'll move on to City Council District Six, Tyler DeSantos, his representative Richmond. Thank you Richmond, for waiting.
Hey guys, sorry, had to adjust this a little bit. Um, long meeting, love it, good to see you guys. Um, so I'm gonna try to keep this like super, super high level. Um, I know you guys don't have much time, so, uh, our committee meeting for budget, uh, just happened, I believe, last week. Um, I had named you guys some of the budget adds that we had tried to add, um, the ones that were included. Um, Chinatown Task Force, four hundred thousand, fifteen thousand for, uh, a speed, uh, I'm blanking on the name now, but for, uh, HPD Patrol District One. Um, and then, uh, two hundred fifty thousand for the comfort stations, uh, in Chinatown parks. Um, I also just wanted to give, uh, a quick shout out to, to Ernest and, uh, Chulon for, uh, some gifts. Uh, number one, power washers from Chulon, and then number two, thirty-five hundred, I believe you, uh, mentioned it earlier, Chair. Um, we just dropped the gift resos for them today, so we're gonna kinda go start going through the process of the city accepting them and actually, uh, uh, using them. Um, and then last thing, Bill twenty-eight, which is relating to naloxone, uh, which would basically require Narcan, the opioid reversal medication, uh, in high-risk locations like, uh, bars and nightclubs. Advanced, uh, in committee, it's going back for second reading next week. Um, and then there are gonna be two, roughly two more hearings after that, uh, before it's, uh, passed into law. Any questions?
Any questions from the board?
Guys, good to see you.
Take care of your next one, thank you. So we're gonna do, let's see if we can squeeze in State Senate, um, District thirteen, Carl Rhodes.
Sorry about that, hello, esteemed board members and everybody present. Um, my name is Kai Hamamoto, I'm an intern at Senator Rhodes' office, this is my first board meeting, I'm very glad to be here with you all, hearing about the concerns. And so I'll go on, because I know we are stuck up for time. So, um, in follow-up to the feral chicken problem that's been going on in the area, the contractor that we are, uh, we currently have employed has removed an additional seven birds from Smith Baratania Park. We are looking forward to seeing that number rise in that area and following areas. Uh, in the red light safety program, where we're putting cameras in order to lessen red light and other traffic, uh, signal violations, we have put up, uh, several more cameras have been put up, uh, along Vineyard Boulevard, Poly Highway. I just put in the chat, the website where you can find all of the locations and the number of citations they currently have. If you're interested in that information, that is currently available. Um, last week, the Department of Health reported five hundred and thirteen new COVID cases, with a seven-day average of seventy-five cases and five deaths. This is mainly due to the new Omicron XBB, uh, one dot five subvariant, uh, which is a prevalent COVID variant in the US. The FDA has authorized, uh, some individuals to get a second booster, uh, mainly limited to those aged sixty-five and older who received a shot in the last four months, or those with weakened immune systems who's received a shot in the last two months. Uh, we encourage those to, uh, get your shots and your boosters, and to wear your mask inside at all times, even when you don't have to. Um, if there are any follow-up questions for Senator Rhodes, I would love to take those down and get them back to him. Uh, if not, I will move along and let the next speaker go ahead of me. Thank you.
Alright, thank you, once again, if you can email, please email. If not, go ahead, um, Board Member Li.
Thank you Chair, this is a visual request for Kai to send to, uh, Senator Rhodes. Uh, constituents have been contacting me about, you know, some of the degree of care that's taken by the, uh, shopping carts in some of our local stores, uh, you know, who's protecting those who use these carts next, whether it's from the dog slobbering on the edge, or the macaw leaving its trail of whatnot on the, uh, on the bars of the, of the shopping cart. If we could find out if there is an attempt to, uh, tighten up care of those who don't have animals in these public places, I'd love to discuss that coming up, thank you.
Alright, thank you, in, anyone else have any questions? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll now move on to State House District twenty-six, that psyche, you there? Any representatives? Hearing none, seeing none, we'll move on to State House, District twenty-eight, Daniel Ho. Hearing none, seeing none, that, um, we're done. Guys, it's nine o'clock, the meeting is over. Sorry. So, anyway, on the downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, number thirteen is scheduled to hold its next meeting on Thursday, July sixth, twenty twenty-three, at six o'clock PM. We broadcast on, um, downtown Chinatown Neighborhood Board, um, thirteen meetings are scheduled on Lelo. I don't know what day it is, I'm still waiting for a response from, on this.
Aye. It's, yeah, it's in the meeting minutes, it's the, um, nine PM on the third Thursday, nine AM on the third Saturday of every month.
So this is a new one?
Correct.
Okay, alright, thank you, appreciate that. Alright, guys have a good day, thank you, you have a good day.